Welcome to August 16, 2021, meeting at Gastonie County Board of Education. I'm Jeff Ramsey, Member at Large and Chairman of the Board. At this time, I would like to ask the other members of the Board to introduce themselves.
Lee Dedman, Gastonie Township.
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Steve Hall, Dallas Township.
Robbie Loveblaze, Cherryville Township.
Doc Cherry, At Large Member.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonie Township.
Brent Moore, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this afternoon, and we look forward to a productive and informative meeting. This is our back-to-school meeting. Our students' first day is August 23rd, just one week away. Our first order of business is to have the prayer and pledge of allegiance to the flag. I would like to ask Dr. Booker to lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Father God, we come to you and we seek your power, Father. You're, we have grateful hearts, Father, but there is so much around us today of trouble. We think of our fellow people in Haiti, we think of Afghanistan, we think of just the world, Lord, and we just need your power to reign. We ask that you be with this board tonight and all that faces us as they meet. And, Lord, we just ask for your blessings on the staff and faculty that have returned and are preparing for the students on Monday. And we thank you for the great opening of our two early colleges and all the learning that has already begun there. We know that you are greater than all, and we seek your wisdom. Be with us. Amen. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is adopt the agenda, and you do have the proposed agenda, and I think we have an amendment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if we could add to the consent agenda, student Chromebook purchases for Gaston virtual, it will be a contract approval, and it was presented in the Curriculum Committee meeting, and it's, we would ask that you add that, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Hall, Mr. Dedman II, any discussions? All in favor? Here's Mr. Moore. It's unanimous. Our next order of business is to hear good news happening in our schools. Dr. Booker, will you share the good news?
Yes, sir. One thing we'd like to recap is the ongoing support of our faculty and staff and central office for the United Way. If you think about 1920 before the pandemic, they raised a little more than $93,000, and again this year, in the midst of a pandemic, raised $93,000 to support United Way. And so it's exciting to know that our leaders recognize that we're the second-largest employer in town and continue to support the United Way even in a time like these. Many of you will be excited to know that North Gaston High School yearbook staff was recognized for its effort to create, design, and publish another award-winning yearbook. The yearbook staff members and their advisor, Ms. Jennifer Reed, continue hard work and commitment to produce a quality yearbook, and we want to commend all of our high school yearbook staffs for the extra effort that has been given. And it was a challenge this year, but North Gaston was awarded an excellence, and we are very proud of all of our high schools and the yearbooks that they produced. You all know finance is a critical part. We have over a $300 million budget and the work that goes on every year to manage that, and our finance department has once again received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is a recognition by the Government Finance Officers Association for providing a comprehensive annual financial report that shows the agency's financial story and also provides information in an engaging manner. If you've ever spent any time in our financials, you know, if you want to know about Gaston County, it's a great place to start because it then shows how the schools participate in the entire county. So I want to thank Mr. Hoskins, his leadership, and the staff in our finance department for continuing the excellent work.[775.12][775.12](Applause) And folks that stay behind the scenes a lot but have done some great work is our Public Relations Department. National School Public Relations Association announced that we have received three awards, two of those being Golden Achievement Awards, for our newspaper and education campaign that was partnered with the Gazette, and for our billboard promotional campaign related to school and the Virtual Academy and all the things it took to come back. And then they received an honorable mention for the Gaston County Schools' story publication. When you say, okay, well, what does that mean? There were only 84 Golden Achievement Awards presented in the entire United States, and two of them were here in Gaston County. So to Mr. Haggins and his staff.[825.12][825.12](Applause) Mr. Chair, that concludes the good news for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Booker, for sharing good news. The next item on the agenda is allow the opportunity for public expression. This is a time when the Board will hear comments from our citizens about the matters of public concern related to our school system. Our Board sets aside the first 30 minutes of our regular monthly meeting for citizens to address the Board. We do have several signed up, and we wanted to hear from as many as we can. So our speakers will keep this in mind as we hear from each other. Before I begin, let me outline our procedure. Citizens wishing to make a comment and who have completed a request to speak form will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step by the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The members of the Board do not comment on public expression during public expression. Public expression is not allowed for comments on confidential personnel matter. The Chair shall rule at all points of order during public expression. So we do have a pretty good amount of people, probably around 18, I think, or 20. The first one is Rebecca Leclerc from Charlotte. Okay. Jessie Jacobs from Charlotte. Ryan Sims, Mount Holly. Lena Ware, Belmont. Ava Clarkson, Belmont.
Hi, my name is Ava Clarkson. My school and address are on the form. I am a minor, so I don't want to, like, say out loud my address. The Red Raider mascot is a stereotype of indigenous people. I'm sure you know this by now. You have heard this argument for over a year now, so today I would like to remind you the reality of what keeping this mascot for South Point High School would mean. Currently, this mascot is causing a great divide in the county. Those fighting to retire the Red Raider know that there is nothing worth keeping about this mascot. We are interviewed by news sources and journalists, and the media coverage around this mascot just won't go away. The Retires Red Raider petition has almost 11,000 signatures. Now, when you look up South Point High School, one of the first things to show up is protest at South Point High School over removal of mascot. Anyone who watches the local news is aware of what is going around, around the controversy of this mascot. It is quite literally impossible for you guys to avoid this. We will keep coming back every month. I'll keep coming back to these meetings. We won't stop posting about this on social media. The only way to escape this negative attention is by changing the mascot. Keeping this mascot means ignoring the voices of your students and leaders. It means ignoring the fact that indigenous culture is not some joke, some offensive slogan or mascot. It's a reality for some students. What do you think is going to happen to the self-esteem of your native students who have to go to school every day to see that a mascot is making a mockery of their culture? I urge you to actively listen to your native students, to those who come here today to express their discomfort with this mascot. Gaston County should be a safe, welcoming place for everyone, not just those who don't have to worry about their culture being made fun of and misrepresented. But how can we claim that Gaston County is welcoming and safe when native South Point students are being bullied because of this mascot? When indigenous voices are talked over by white people who constantly try to tell native people that their feelings are invalid? It is outrageous that this mascot has taken so long to change, despite how offensive it is. If not now, when? You all have the power in your vote. You can vote to change this mascot. You can vote to do the right thing. If you think changing this mascot now is too much work or will cause too much controversy, then you are sweeping it under the rug, sweeping native voices and feelings under the rug. Are you going to change this mascot, or are you going to sit back and watch all native people suffer? You have a decision to make. Before I leave here today, I ask you finally, retire the Red Raider.
Thank you. What city are you? Are you in Belmont?
Belmont.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Annalise Bailey, and I'm a rising freshman. I'm here to urge you all to change our South Point High School mascot. You've probably heard this a million times over the past few weeks, but it seems to not be making a difference, so I'll have to say it again. The South Point High School mascot is racist. This makes me extremely sad because I'm entering South Point High School doors as a student for the first time in a few weeks. I want to enter a building where I feel welcomed and safe. If I'm attending a school knowing it has a Native American as its mascot, the exact opposite will happen. When I started working on this speech, I wanted to do some research on our school system. On the Gaston County School website, it says that you all strive to create a safe and nurturing learning environment. For native students, it's anything but. I want you to imagine a young student trying to get through their day at South Point High School when they see another student wearing a logo on their shirt, someone of their culture, a Native American. They get through their day only thinking about that. Then they go to a football game that night. They see that same logo everywhere, somewhere where they're supposed to be having fun with their friends. How would that make you feel? Insulted, enshamed, frustrated? Is that really the type of environment you want to create for students? Are you still not convinced? Let's look at someone's personal experience. Rachel Moon was a student in the Bellefonte area school system. The Red Raider was also in use at her local school. Classmates would use these negative stereotypes to bully her and make fun of the color of her skin. She began to hide herself, ashamed of who she was. She found herself falling silent around groups of people just like you. Years later, after Rachel graduated, a movement started to change their old mascot. With the support of her community, she finally gained the courage to speak up. "I am still tired, but I will not remain silent," she said. "I am not a mascot. Native Americans are not mascots. They are first people, and they should be respected. There is no honorable way to represent them as sports mascots." Are we, as a community, going to let people go through the same thing that Rachel did? With this information, I beg you to please change the mascot. It is racist, it is insulting, it is disrespectful, and it creates a toxic school environment for everyone, students, parents, and staff included. Let go of tradition and join us in a world of love, acceptance, and respect.
Thank you.[1277.01][1277.01](Applause)
Good evening. My name is Cindy Scruggs. I live at 123 Doster Heights Place, Mount Holly, and I'm the very proud parent of four South Point High School graduates. Since 2002, including earlier this year, the State Board of Education has repeatedly made clear that it is the responsibility of local education agencies to review and set policies on mascots. If the mascot creates a hostile learning environment and affects students' well-being, as research shows, then the school board has a responsibility to act. The Retire the Red Raider Coalition has made efforts to engage and meet with the Gaston County School Board for over a year. Recently, the Metroline Native American Association formally requested that the Red Raider mascot be added to this month's school board agenda. More recently, that request was denied. The precedent for local school boards voting to end the use of offensive mascot has been set for over 20 years. This year, June of 2021, the Jackson County School Board changed the Cullowhee Valley High School mascot. In July of 2020, the Union County School Board changed the Parkwood High School mascot. In January of 2020, the Guilford County School Board changed Guilford High School's mascot. In May of 2004, the Guilford County School Board changed both the Andrews High School mascot and the Southern High School mascot. In 1999, the Buncombe County School Board changed the female mascot at Irwin High School. In addition to these examples, there are a number of North Carolina elementary and middle school mascots that have also been changed. Stop scapegoating Principal Gary Ford. Stop dividing the Belmont community. Step up to your responsibility as a local school board and retire the Red Raider. Do not be on the wrong side of history. And while I'm talking about your place in history, the Gaston County children and teachers' lives and well-being depend on all of you. Reinstitute the mask mandate for all staff and students.
Thank you.[1462.64][1462.64](Applause)
Good evening. I'm Dr. Crystal Bowe. I live at 225 Cramerton Mills Parkway in Cramerton. My son is a graduate of South Point High School, and I practice in Gastonie at Caramont-Gaston Day. I'm excited to be here tonight, and there's a group of physicians here who want to provide information and support as you guys navigate through what I know is a difficult and rapidly changing landscape. COVID-19, unfortunately, has worsened substantially in the past several weeks. We have a 40-time-fold increase in cases from about several weeks ago. We are 20% above the state average here in Gaston County in new cases. Our hospital is overwhelmed. We need your support, and we want to support you as you try to keep students in school all year round. We would like to ask you to seriously consider reinstituting the mask mandate. We know that masks work. They help reduce the transmission of COVID-19 by stopping respiratory droplets. We know that masks will help keep these students in school, and it will help keep our teachers safe. As a former biology teacher from Guilford County, North Carolina, I know how hard these people work, and I know that they are here to care for the students. I want us to be able to support them. I know that this can be a difficult issue, but there's a lot of data, I have studies here, that would help you see that the mask will work. I would love for them to be gone, but until COVID is gone, this is the only way to keep ourselves, our students, our families, our churches safe. With that, I'm going to drop this information off so that you can have it. Other physicians will be speaking. Please know I am here in our community to serve everyone. If you want additional information or support, all of the physicians here and everyone at Caramont is here to serve.
Dr. David Reinhardt.
David Reinhardt from Belmont. I live at 5400 Amanda Lane, and I'm a family physician in Belmont. I've worked there 36 years, and I'm also the past president of the North Carolina Academy of Family Physicians. Crystal, that was hard to follow. She did a very excellent job.[1642.58][1642.58](Laughter) Yes, I'm here to, in the hopes that as a community, we might all engage all of the strategies that we have available to us to mitigate the transmission of this virus. As Crystal said, it's rampant right now. It's a, we're a forest on fire with this virus right now, in this very county. This morning, our community hospital a few miles from here had 87 patients admitted with COVID, six on ventilators, one of them a dear patient of mine that is doing poorly. This is a serious disease. We need to do everything we can to mitigate this transmission. We've done this before. You've been doing it. We have social distancing, we're avoiding assemblies, we're keeping people home when they're the least bit sick, we're hand washing, we're doing those things. Vaccinations, of course, are incredibly important, but masking is another strategy that is low-cost, evidence-based, and needs to be continued. We all want to keep our students in the classroom. We know that's the best way to teach. I think everyone would probably agree with that. The way to do it is to mitigate transmission in our schools. Masking is a big part of that. If you choose to continue that mask, the masking policy is from before, you will be in the, in agreement with most all of the medical community. The CDC, the American Academy of Family Physicians, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the North Carolina Academy of Family Physicians, the North Carolina Pediatric Society, all encourage universal indoor masking, as we've talked about. So thank you.
Thank you.[1763.17][1763.17](Applause)
Good evening. I'm Dr. Brian Buzio. I live at 3424 Raglin Drive here in Gastonie, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I really thank my colleagues for coming out tonight. They have done just, I think, an excellent job of explaining where we are in Gaston County, and as Dr. Reinhardt said, we are on fire right now, and we are asking your help with this. And I want to, I'm going to go from a quite different route here. You know the stats, you've seen them, you've heard them. I'm going to talk, kind of like I was talking to my I'm going to talk, kind of like I was talking to my patients, so that maybe everybody can understand, because there's some myths out there. There's some misunderstanding. And I just feel very strongly, we need to all be on the same page. And I want you all to understand, and that includes everybody in the room here, masks do work. They work because they're a barrier. People talk about, oh, no, stuff can get through the masks. What about oxygen? What about that? Those are very, very small particles. They are much, much smaller than viruses. Viruses are easily trapped and restricted from the masks. They've been shown in multiple studies to decrease transmission. Our ultimate goal here, I believe, as a community, is to keep our kids in school and keep them safe. If we do not do some of these things, we're going to have problems with spread of the disease. Masks prevents, masking prevents spread. This prevents infection. It prevents teachers from being out, prevents kids from being quarantined. That prevents classrooms from shutting down, prevents schools from shutting down. None of us want that. We all have a common goal. I can assure you that masking is a strong piece of that puzzle, piece of that goal, and we can help achieve that. From a medical standpoint, I mean, obviously, we're all very concerned about that. You've heard how our hospital is already overwhelmed. You've heard about children in pediatric ICUs. 200 children in the last 10 days have been diagnosed with COVID in Gaston County. So, everything we can do to prevent the spread will help. The other thing that I want to say is that I understand that you guys are under a lot of pressure. You have a very difficult decision to make, a very difficult task, and a very big responsibility. We're used to that from a medical standpoint, but we're dealing with patients individually. You're dealing with a whole community, and that's a mammoth responsibility. And I care about you all, too. I care about you all. I care about this community like I care about my patients. And what I want for you all is that, yes, when an angry parent calls and asks why they're having to mask, you can tell them that you are doing everything in your power to help keep their child in school and have them get the education that we want them to get. And likewise, from a medical standpoint, when you hear about these kids that are sick, and the mom or dad calls about their child who's in the pediatric ICU at Levine, because we don't have a pediatric ICU here in Gaston County, you can look them in the eye and say, "I've done everything I can to keep your child safe." And instead of being angry, they're probably going to thank you. And that's really what I want. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Stephen Christie Franks. Rebecca Hurd. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, she is here. Hold on. They didn't think she was here. Steve, Stephanie Christie Franks. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Gaston County School Board. It seems that the pro-mask folks are the only ones that got the details of the meeting tonight. I find that highly discouraging. While you're considering whether our children should come to school wearing masks every day, all day, like muzzles, I would urge you to consider whether you, as a parent, would want to co-parent with the government at any level. Your mask and vaccine mandates take away parents' rights as it relates to raising and teaching our children, and we should have a choice. I've taken the time to read Governor Cooper's letter to the school board, who chose not to comply with his toolkit recommendations, and I thought it was kind of like a little bit bullying, under the guise of safety. I did notice that he is missing some information, namely evidence, science, common sense, and decency. COVID presents almost no risk to our children at all. 4.2 million kids have tested positive in the United States, and 0.08% have, unfortunately, passed away. What happened to the flu? The CDC estimated that 480 kids died from the flu in the 2018-2019 season. That is more than have passed away from COVID in 18 months. And I don't know that anyone here on the board, or maybe even the doctors present in the room, suggested that anybody mask up children related to the flu. Do you know what it's called when you force a child to wear a mask for fear of a virus that poses almost no threat to them? It's called child abuse. You want to look up a disease? Men chow sin by proxy. That's what this is. Why are we forcing our children to participate in this delusional charade? There are all kinds of psychological damage when we force our kids to cover their faces, teach them that the air is toxic, or that everybody around them is sick, forcing them to breathe through sweat, spit, and dirt-soaked rags for eight hours a day. They can't learn to read. They can't see their teacher enunciating words. They can't even, their immune systems are developing. When, what happens to their immune systems when they're wearing a mask all day? Do you want to place that burden on the children? I ask you why. It's not to keep them safe. They are safe. It's not to keep the adults safe. They can get vaccinated if they want. It's a symbolic security blanket. I wonder, what kind of kickback does the state of North Carolina, Governor Cooper, get when they reach the magic vaccination number that everybody's trying to get to? Has anybody thought about that? Are we looking where the money is? I think Gaston County says, "We believe that you, as a parent, knows what's best for your child and your family, and we trust that you will take personal responsibility and accountability for your family's health and can make the best decision regarding masks, vaccines, et cetera."
Please.
Let's end it tonight and choose freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Hurd.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Hurd. I live at 2610 Thomas Trail in Gastonia. I'm a mother of two. I have a rising kindergartner. I taught preschool last year with a mask on the whole time. It was not fun, obviously. Everybody knew it wasn't fun, but we did what was best for our kids. I was really hoping that I wouldn't have to make the decision that my kid might be the only one in her kindergarten class wearing a mask, but it's for her health and safety. It's for the health and safety of my parents, who are aging. It's on the health and safety of my great-grandparents that I haven't seen in forever, and I would really like to give them a hug again. And at this point, not having the Board of Education on the side of science, in the name of education, where we teach science, is really disappointing. And I think at this point, too, we have, we really diminish the losses of the people that have died from this, who are a part of our community, and especially those people who are in our school system. I know bus drivers. I know spouses of teachers, and I know teachers that lost their lives to COVID. And we're saying it's okay to not mask up when the doctors are telling us we're in a spike? I really implore you to think about your choices and how it will impact our children, especially for a new mom coming into this school system. I would really like to know my kid's going to be safe next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Rae Shelton.
Hi. My name is Kelly Rae Shelton. I live at 149 Main Street in McAttonville. And I'm just here, as a mama bear, worried about her cub and worried about the fact that she's starting school this year for the first time. She's a kindergartner. She's five. She turns six in September. And I'm here to speak on her behalf because she cannot get vaccinated. And I find that concerning. And I find it concerning that masks are even a question, especially with science here at your beck and call. I just ask that you please, I beg you, to please listen to the science and please do the right thing. And please know that if one child dies, that that is on your shoulders. And if you have done everything that you can, then I feel like that would be able to have a good conscience. So, I just beg you, please, to listen to science and please choose to put masks back as a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Merrick. These are hard to see in this. This is the copies I'm getting. Can't see.
My name is Amanda Memmerick. I'm a Belmont resident. I'm the mother of a rising second grader and a two-year-old, and I'm here to ask you to reverse your decision to make mask-wearing mandatory in Gaston County schools. My child will be wearing a mask when school starts, but another parent's decision for their child to not wear a mask can affect my daughter. If a child has COVID and isn't wearing a mask in school, my child has to quarantine and miss two weeks of school, regardless of whether she's wearing a mask, and so do all her classmates. My child and other children pay the price for someone choosing not to wear a mask, even though we couldn't control those decisions. Last school year, I felt safe sending my daughter to school because of all the precautions in place, including wearing a mask. Still, my daughter's school had at least 15 positive COVID cases. That's during a year where kids only attended school two days a week until March 1st. I don't want to go back to remote learning. My child learns best in a classroom with a teacher, but I fear that making a mask optional will cost countless quarantines that could have been prevented. COVID is making a comeback in Gaston County. Last week, 200 children tested positive. The recent rise in cases, coupled with a more contagious Delta variant, should make you reconsider your decision. I'm not the only one that believes masks should be required. The American Association of Pediatrics, the Mayo Clinic, the State Department of Health and Human Services, and the CDC, among others, all support wearing masks in school. And more than 500 people have signed an online petition created last Thursday asking the school board to require masks. Science shows that mask-wearing is safe and prevents the spread of COVID, as evidenced by at least 40 peer-reviewed studies published in reputable medical journals. Masks don't lower oxygen levels. They don't harm the immune system. They may not be as comfortable as going bare-faced, but they do make a difference. This spring, I watched online as this school board analyzed the data and carefully considered whether to open schools up to four days a week. I've sat in this very room and watched the school board make unpopular decisions over the years because they were the right thing to do. I'm here today asking you to do that again, to rise above the politics and do the right thing for our kids so they can stay in school and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy White.
I'm Amy White. I live in Gastonia. Give me just one second. Good evening. I'm coming before you to make a request to revisit the decision to make masking optional in schools this year. Gaston County serves 31,193 students in public schools. I am a mom of five. I'm also a scientist. We all have pandemic fatigue, but that does not mean we can be less vigilant. I implore you to look at the decision you're making for our children and the impact it can and will have on the entire community. In Priority Four of the Gaston County School Strategic Plan, the mission states every student is healthy, safe, and responsible. How can you state this as a priority in your mission if you can't even manage to do the bare minimum to ensure the health and safety for our kids? Masking is a proven method to prevent the transmission of COVID. Forgive me for being blunt, but you have been elected to ensure our children's safety and health while they are at school. Myself and many other parents I know have sent multiple emails to every member of this board every day since your decision, but to no avail. All I heard was crickets. If you're going to make a decision that impacts the entire community, at least have the courage to own it and face the worried parents you have now put in an impossible situation. Tonight, I am here to make my voice heard. I sent you all the video of the COV-SIM predictive modeling and the grave consequences if we don't mask. May I remind you that last week, we had 200 new cases of COVID in Gaston County for our children? Imagine if all 200 of those children had been in school and unmasked. In that scenario, every person they came in contact with at school, including teachers, would have to then quarantine for 14 days. If both parties are masked, only the COVID-positive person has to quarantine. I'm sure you can see how this can very quickly become a domino effect and essentially shut down entire schools. Pickens County School in South Carolina had to return to virtual learning after nine days in school. 142 students and 26 staff are COVID-positive, and 534 are in quarantine. The same can be seen in Florida and Georgia. We know children need to be in school for in-person learning, but that won't happen if mitigation strategies are not put into place before school begins. It starts with masks. The CDC, the Health Department, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the toolkit provided by the governor, all state children over the age of two should be wearing masks in an in-person learning environment. These are the entities that have been designated to speak on behalf of our children's safety. Our children have already had to bear the weight of so much in the midst of a global pandemic that's threatened every semblance of normalcy they've ever known. This has been life-altering for them. We all want things to get back to normal, but we cannot pretend this very real threat doesn't exist just so we can feel normal. Imagine for a moment what it would do to their mental health status if their friends were to be hospitalized, intubated, or even die. That is a possibility, given the optional masking you decided on last month. I understand the desire of others to be given the choice for their children, but it affects the school as a whole, not just those children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sierra Hall.
I want to remove my mask for speaking, guys. How are y'all? My name is Sierra Hall. I'm a Gaston County resident. My daughter is a student in Belmont, and I just want to speak to you guys, just simply as a parent. My daughter has been home virtually since COVID started. My daughter is also a hearing impaired child. So, you know, her being at home virtually is just not being beneficial to her anymore. Over the length of time that we have been at home, she has suffered tremendously. So, now I am here because I do believe that it is time for our children to go back to school. Even with my daughter, you know, being home, I know that she needs to be at school. And the thing about that is, is that when we do send our kids to school and put our kids into you guys' care, we want to know that you guys are going to enforce the rules. We need to know that when these kids get on these transportation rides or on buses, that they are sanitizing and making sure that they are taking accurate temperature checks and making kids go back to their homes if they can't pass a temperature check. We need to make sure that our teachers are in school. This is not just about the kids. This is about the teachers that have underlying health issues as well that may be around these kids that do not wear masks or don't have on masks and could be asymptomatic. It's not just about the kids. It's also about the kids going home, like somebody else said, to younger siblings that cannot get vaccinated, going home, contaminating the house. So, I just ask that you guys, please, make a better decision. Put our kids first and put their health first. Put your guys' health first. Put the teachers' health first. It's not just about these kids. It's not just about funding either. You know, if you don't have kids, you can't get funding. If the kids don't live, you won't be able to get paid. So, we just want to make sure that we are protecting every life. We want to make sure that everybody is protected. And I ask that you guys just retract your vote from last week and make our kids wear a mask. It's the safest choice. We see the numbers. We see the example from Charlotte right now. Charlotte, they have so many kids that are sick, 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 just like somebody else said, 200 kids that are sick. And just imagine if we would have been in school and some of those kids would not have had on masks. How many kids do you think that would have multiplied to be? And right now, we just cannot take that risk. We can't do it. So, I ask that you guys, please, consider everyone else's opinions here. I understand that people are aggravated with wearing masks. We are all aggravated with the pandemic. But like I said last time, we cannot drop the ball, or we're going to end up in a worse situation than we were in last year, and we won't be able to get ahead of it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Lath Snell. Snead.
Hi. I'm Lath Snead at 4353 Hickory Hollow Road. I just really was so angered to hear about the mask optional policy. I tell you, we just cannot do it. We can't have it. We're going to have such a severe disruption, increased cases. I mean, we just can't do it. I've got a rising senior, my last child. This is her last year in school. And her brother, that graduated in 2018, just cannot wrap his head around, who happened to be a special needs student, just doesn't know why the same level of safety and care that he was given in micromanaging all his education, that his sister's going to be sitting next to somebody that's unmasking, and my rising senior is afraid to come back to school. She's been in GVA this whole time. She wants to come back to school, but she is afraid. I'm afraid. Her father's afraid. And her brother just doesn't understand why masking would be an option. option. It isn't an option. I tell you, the mask is not symbolism. It's just safety. It is a layer of protection, just like our athletes in school that wear helmets, wear padding, and we protect them, and we make sure that we're guarding them as much as we can while they're out there playing around in their athletics, while they're giving it their all. The mask is just that same all that we need to give. The virus is not tearing us apart. It's bringing us together. You have to see that. We're in this together. It makes the biggest amount of difference. When you say mask optional, that's just a horrible option. That doesn't work for anybody. I was raised in a children's hospital for the first part of my young life, and I'm telling you, that's not where you want your kids to be. We don't even have a children's hospital here. That's horrible to not be able to visit with your family, to be sick, not be with your pets and your friends. That's a horrible way to live. It is not fair for the rest of us to suffer all of these cases that are going to get walked through our own doors because of having unmasked students sitting next to masked students. We have to listen to the science on this. It's critical. It is critical, and it just makes sense. It's a kindness. It's the social equivalent to holding open a door. It is just the nicest thing that you can do. It is the least effective measure that we can give our kids. It is the very least. Mask mandates are back. Masking is back. Federal funds are being withheld. It's happening, and it'll happen to anybody that resists it. You need to reconsider a mask mandate because it'll cause the least amount of disruption possible. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Jordan.
Good evening, members of the board. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. My name's Ann Jordan, 160 Palomino Trail, Mount Holly, 28120. I have two children. I come to you as a parent of those two children at Belmont Elementary and also as a medical professional. I'm a nurse and estheticist of 24 years, and I work throughout the community at Levine's and Piedmont and Rock Hill and also at some outpatient surgery centers. And I was at work today, just found about this meeting, so I have to forgive me, it's sort of on the fly, but I stand for our parents making the decision to keep our children masked instead of a forced mandate. Studies have not been conducted with cloth masks versus surgical masks. Children typically do not wear surgical masks, nor do they wear respirators, simply a layer of fabric that goes over their nose and their mouth. There are no peer-reviewed studies that support that is efficacious as a surgical mask as a respirator. The fact that I would like to have my children unmasked does not affect your decision to mask your child. You can send them to school in a surgical mask, in a N95 mask, or a cloth mask. It's up to you. The hospitals, yes, they're short, but they're short not so much from COVID. It's more of a nursing shortage. They cannot staff the beds. I see that daily at Levine's. I see that daily at Piedmont, less of an extent, of course, in the outpatient surgery centers. It's a push for money. Since the beginning, COVID, a COVID diagnosis means more money for the hospital. I've seen case after case after case of kids, of adults, that come into the hospital for a broken leg or a motorcycle accident or a non-accidental trauma, for God's sakes. That's in other words for saying child abuse. And they were COVID-positive. They're labeled as COVID-positive patients. There are other viruses that are going around. The numbers for RSV right now are very high. It's primarily pediatric, or it is a pediatric virus that affects the lungs. Because a child tests positive does not necessarily mean they are sick with COVID. Asymptomatic spread has been shown to be the least dangerous part of spread. So I stand with freedom for parents to decide what their children should do. That comes with the vaccine. That also comes with the mask mandate, as far as I'm concerned. And I'd like to thank you for my time.
Thank you. We have one more left, but we cannot recognize the name. It's 916. No, we're asking if anyone else signed up to speak.
I can't either.
Thank you. But this gentleman here.
Sorry. You've got such pretty cursors. We can't read it.
My name is Winslow Melis, and I live in Gaston County.
Thanks.
Eight months ago, my grandson bought me this hat, and it says right here, "World's Best Grandpa." And here's what I want to tell you folks, what I would like for you to do. Unvaccinated children are now the most vulnerable against the virus. My grandson went virtual for kindergarten to protect my wife and I. Now that Delta is here, it is only right as adults, we do what is right to protect those under 12 years old. Masks should be mandatory in K to eighth grade. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Did you sign up?
No, did not.
Okay.
I have a form on file from the last meeting.
Okay, sure. You don't have to sign up beforehand?
Yes, but we try to hear all the public comments. You already spoke.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to say, there are three studies there.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the studies talks about cloth mask as well as surgical mask as well as N95 mask. So you guys can really look over the different types of mask and the effectiveness for them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you can come on up and just state your name and address, and you can fill out the form later.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Higgins. I reside in Gaston County, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak this evening. Tonight, I would like to touch on a couple of key points that I believe are worth repeating, and I encourage you to continue to stand strong on your decision to keep masks optional for children in school. The public health officials and the media have been warning us that the coronavirus can be fatal, not just for the elderly and the immunocompromised, but young people as well. The data shows that this is extremely rare. Here's the death rate data from the CDC COVID-19 pandemic planning scenarios from the CDC website. From 0 to 19 years, the survival rate is 99.99815%. While coronavirus is obviously concerning and a very real threat to some people, the elderly and the immunocompromised, the data also shows, I'm sorry, the data also shows that the risk for the rest of the population is extraordinarily low. Based on studies done from Stanford University, we know that we are dealing with a virus that has an infection fatality rate of .05 in persons 70 years old and under. This compares quite well to the infection rate of most influenza viruses and even lower, and yet the draconian and massive reactions to SARS-CoV-2 have never been employed during an influenza season. Data now suggests that children not only have extremely low risk, but also that they naturally have the capability of evading the SARS-CoV-2 virus due to the lack of ACE2 receptors in their nostrils. It escapes us as to why this deceit continues to be served to the public and has not been stopped immediately. The risk of COVID-19 in children is so low that any imagined benefits cannot possibly outweigh the risk. Based on CDC data, the risk of children between the ages of 0 and 19 years of age dying from COVID-19 is an extremely low risk of .00195%. This rate is much lower than the risk of children dying from influenza. Forcing masks on children can weaken their immune systems. Exposure to nature, benign viruses, and germs help build a robust immune system. If they lack exposure to these microbes, it can and will lead to overwhelming and serious consequences to their health due to having a weak defense against a minor illness. We might be setting our children up for future disaster when they emerge from societal restrictions fully with no mask to then be at the mercy of normally benign opportunistic infections.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could this be why we're having an increased offseason surge of RSV?
And these are the last two.
Hi, good evening, everyone. And my name is Dr. Monica Powell, and I'm a parent of four children and also a board-certified pediatrician, okay? I'm not going to bog you down with numbers because numbers don't matter. It does not matter how small the percentage is of children dying from COVID, because if that one person is your child, that's what matters to you and to each individual in here. I am in full support of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines that support indoor masking in public schools. There are a few main points that I want to make about this topic. The first is about science and expertise. The recommendations from national experts, even in the face of opposition from vocal parents, should be the goal of any decision-making. Paraphrasing a recent article from our local AAB chapter, "Public health decisions designed to keep children healthy and safe should be made by superintendents and school districts with the input of reputable medical health experts." I realize that following the experts can be frustrating. It seemed like we were on the tail end of a pandemic in the late spring and in the summer. However, the Delta strain spreads much easier than the original strain of COVID among both vaccinated and unvaccinated people. Currently, we are seeing a rise in COVID cases and hospitalizations around the region. Looking at the data from last week for Gaston County, as everyone said, there's 16% positivity rate in Gaston County with 1/4 of those being in-school aged children. This is a concerning trend. In my conversations with colleagues around the state and the country, this is actually higher than many geographic areas. The common theme in these cases is the lack of vaccination. The adults have chosen not to vaccinate, and the kids are ineligible to be vaccinated. The next point I want to make is about this community. One of the things about Gaston County is that, you know, I moved here 16 years ago, is that I felt like we embody the American ideal of a community coming together. We can all come together and protect those most vulnerable among us by simply making masks mandatory while in school. Helping your neighbor is what masking indoors is all about. This is not about me. This is about we, okay? While masks offer some protection for the wearer, the primary goal is to prevent the spread of large droplets from the wearer to those around them. When you wear your mask indoors and put the mask on your kids, think about your neighbors. Think about the neighbors that are immunocompromised and despite being vaccinated are at higher risk of seriously getting seriously ill from COVID. The next point I'd like to make is that we have to consider how not masking versus masking can affect post-exposure quarantining. As previously mentioned, let's consider how our children will have to have two weeks off from school if someone in their area, in their classroom, is positive for COVID. I have a child who has special needs, and her best bet in learning is to be in school to learn. She had to take two weeks off last year just as they went to the four-day school week. She had to take two weeks off because of COVID and exposure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Melissa Wagner.
Hi, my name is Melissa Wagner, and I live at 2015 Donegal Court, Gastonia, North Carolina. I have a niece who lives with me who is enrolled in North Gaston High School. I'm coming to you today because you are the leaders of the school board, and, you know, sometimes leaders have to make very difficult decisions based on facts and science even when it's unpopular. I need you guys to make the right decision. A few years ago, I was diagnosed with cancer, and while I am okay at this point, I still have to see an oncologist every single month. Imagine if my daughter caught COVID at school because she's around kids without masks on and then brought it home to me, and unbeknownst, I carry it to my oncologist, and all the cancer patients get sick that are sitting beside of me as they're taking their chemotherapy. So it's not just about, you know, parents making a choice to have their children wear masks or not. This is a public safety issue. Science says that it's safer and people are not going to, as likely to, get COVID if everyone is wearing masks. North Carolina DHHS said that we need to all wear masks. CDC says we all need to wear masks. Please, I'm begging you, follow science for the safety of our children, who we want to be safe and protected. Otherwise, you know, what are we supposed to do? The virtual school has been closed. It's not like I can sign up for that at this point. You know, in the spring, when everybody was wearing masks, I felt very safe sending my child back to school, and when people were getting their temperatures checked and safety protocols were in place. Now, I don't want to send my child back to school because I don't feel safe and she doesn't feel safe. And on top of that, imagine sending your six-year-old child to school and telling them, you want them to wear a mask. Who's going to enforce that? Are we to send a note to the nurse? Who is going to make sure that that child keeps their mask on so that they don't come home and bring something to their brother or sister or family member? It would be easier if everybody wears masks. It will be safer if everyone wears masks, so I'm begging you, please, put the mask mandate back in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your comments and passionate input, and we'll continue concern for Gaston County schools. Although the board does not typically respond during the period for public comment, we do want to hear from the public, and we direct staff to work on those issues that need to be addressed. Thank you again for your comments. The next item on the agenda is the approval of corrections of minutes. This is item on the agenda for action. I need a motion for the minutes for June 21st, June 21st for a regular meeting and July 27th, special meeting. Okay, Mr. Cherry made the motion, second by Mr. Dedman. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. The next item on the agenda allows for a report from our superintendent with a COVID update.
Well, thank you, members of the board, for this time. As you look at the remainder of your agenda, you will see we are talking about opening up the 10th-largest school district in the state of North Carolina, serving 30,000 students from pre-K all the way through our early college with our 13th-year students. And you'll see later a back-to-school update from Mr. Higgins that will talk about numerous items and then the work that our academic services team has been doing throughout the summer and into what we'll be doing in the fall. But for now, we want to talk about operating our schools and continuing to navigate the challenges that are presented by COVID-19. Our schools are preparing for the opening in an effort to keep everyone healthy and safe. We'll continue the layered approach that reduces risk of exposure and transmission. Students will be encouraged to social distance whenever possible. Students will be reminded to wash their hands frequently. We will have hand sanitizer available not only in classrooms but throughout the buildings. Students and staff will be asked to observe one-way traffic flow in hallways wherever it is feasible. And upon arrival at school, we will continue our practice of students reporting directly to class rather than congregating in any common areas. This was very successful last year. We also will continue with the health screening, but we'll be asking our families as well as our employees to do that at home, and we'll encourage anyone that shows symptoms to please not attend school that day or not serve as an employee and notify their respective school. school. Those are the things that are in place. We've, we've heard many already talked about that the Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit was changed into JAH and when Governor Cooper allowed his mandatory mask mandate to expire, you were given the opportunity to exercise choice. And at the July 27th meeting, you exercised that choice. What we want to do is continue to keep you informed. And I'm now going to turn the mic over to Steve Eaton, who is the health director for the county, for him to give you updated information on, from when he spoke to you on the 27th to today. So, Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Dr. Booker. Everybody hear me okay? Great. Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, members of the school board and Dr. Booker, and thank you again for having me this evening. With regard to the summary of our key metrics, next slide, please. So like previous presentations, I'd like to begin tonight with an overview of our county's COVID key metrics that we as public health and our healthcare community review in order to assess the current and future trends of this pandemic. When you look at the metrics ending August 9th, all the metrics were in red, meaning trending in the wrong direction. When we look at these metrics ending yesterday, you'll see that four of the five metrics remain in the red with influenza-like illness in the emergency department getting a yellow because it did not increase for two consecutive weeks. This continuation of negative trends is due to the spread of the Delta variant in our community, which is now more than 90% of all cases along with our county's low vaccination rate. So let's look again, as we did last time, at the individual metrics. So with regards to percentage of emergency department visits with influenza-like illness, we use this surveillance data to look at those who present in the emergency department with influenza-like symptoms because the symptoms of COVID and flu are so very similar. This metric, as I stated earlier, gets a yellow because it's flattened a little bit. However, it is up at a higher percentage than what we, what we like to see. COVID-like testing in the emergency department, this metric looks at the number of patients in the ED that actually get tested for COVID. While remaining fairly stable across much of the pandemic, this metric gets a red because it's increased from 25% of patients being tested in the ED for COVID to 29%. This one, I think, is, should jump out alarmingly to most folks. When we look at the daily new cases of COVID, you'll see the rapid and concerning acceleration of new cases since the last time I spoke to you on July 27th. So you can see 8-1 and you can back out to July 1st, but if you, if you look at the tail end of July and then look at that sharp increase that we've seen just since the last time I spoke, it is concerning. We're now averaging nearly 140 new positives a day compared to just three to four cases per day four weeks ago. This metric gets a red because it's sharply trending upwards. Again, this increase is due to the Delta variant, which is the most highly contagious of the variants so far. And what I want to point out is regarding the original strain of SARS-CoV-2, one positive person, it typically infected 2.3 individuals. That's called the R-not rate. One person with the Delta variant infects on average about seven individuals. So the original strain of COVID was 2.3 people and the Delta variant is on average seven infected people per one infected. So when we look at the positivity rate in relation to the total number of tests, if you see this metric also accelerating in the wrong direction. Our current positivity rate is 17.7%. We within the health department do that on a weekly basis. The state does a two-week average. So sometimes you'll look at the state average and it's a little different from ours, but we're determining positivity on a weekly basis. So currently, our positivity rate for Gaston County is 17.7%, which is up from 10.8% from, which is when I last spoke with you three weeks ago. And it's also up from 5.5%, which is where it was four weeks ago. So over four weeks, we moved from 5.5% to 17.7%. A high positivity rate shows a greater penetration of the virus in the community along with greater community transmission. So this metric obviously gets a red also for trending upwards. This one, again, should alarm you as well and it's one that you heard the physicians at Karamont speaking directly to. This is obviously concerning pertaining to the number of citizens being hospitalized per COVID. So anytime we see a sharp increase in daily new cases along with a sharp increase in the positivity rate within the community, there's, there's a little bit of a lag and then all of a sudden, you obviously see a sharp increase in hospitalizations. And unfortunately, what we then see on the other side of a sharp increase in hospitalizations is a higher mortality increases as well. So take a look at where, I'm sorry, if you'll go back to the, there you go. So take a look at where we, where we were with hospitalizations on August 3rd and look at where we are now with more than 80 hospitalized and more than five on the ventilators today. When we see sustained high increase, obviously, it gives us great concern just for the impact it can have on the capacity of hospital systems across our, our county and country, which have already been strained so greatly since the beginning of the pandemic. Okay, so let's take a look at Gaston County's school-aged cases. This data regarding school-aged children, I do want to emphasize covers all Gaston County children. It is not specific to the Gaston County school system, but rather includes all cases or all school-aged children, public, private, and charter. So this slide shows you the number of weekly COVID-positive cases in Gaston County for the four to 18-year-old population. Again, this includes public, private, and charter. I made an intentional line marker, you can see there, for July 27th, which is the last time I presented to you at your school board meeting. You can see that in this school-aged population, we've continued to see a rapid increase in daily new positives. For this slide, ages four through 18 as a percentage of Gaston County's total cases, the left vertical axis shows you the number of Gaston County cases for that month in the blue and the total number of school cases in the red. The right vertical axis shows you a percentage with the corresponding green trend line showing the ages four to 18 as a percentage of the total positive cases in Gaston County. So when comparing just July and August, you can see the Gaston County has experienced an increase in new positives, an increase in school-aged positives, and the percent of school-aged children as a, as a percentage of total cases is also increasing. With regards to vaccination rate, when we look at Gaston County for eligible school-aged children to be vaccinated, you can see that there's a great gap between Gaston County and North Carolina. Currently, those who are 12 to 17 who are eligible for, for the vaccine can receive Pfizer. In North Carolina, 29% of 12 to 17-year-olds are fully vaccinated compared to 17% in Gaston County. And I will emphasize that vaccines are widely available throughout the county, both in pharmacies, physicians' offices, and also here in the local health, here in our health department, Monday through Friday with no appointment necessary. And I do encourage parents, if you're listening, that if you do have questions or concerns or are hesitant about the vaccine for your child, to, to reach out to your child's pediatrician or family physician and have an in-depth conversation with them about the vaccine. So I also just wanted to point out to you and take a look at where we were the second week of August last year heading into the school year compared to where we are now. So last year, you'll see that our daily average case count, the second week of August, was 41. We now stand at 132. The number, average daily case count for the four to 18-year-old population, the second week of August last year was five and now it's 19.7. The positivity rate was 7.62. It's now 17.71%. And the average daily hospital count census was 38.2 and 67.4 right now on average. And I want to highlight the fact that this was, I also want to highlight the fact that as what's, much as what's been brought up this evening, that makes this a little bit different is last year, we were entering the school system again with a A and a B schedule along with students being able to be virtual. So basically, you had a third of the students roughly coming into the classroom that could be socially distanced and masking was mandatory. And I feel like with our close working with the school system and having so many things in place, we're able to navigate that very successfully. Obviously, we, we all, including myself, believe students should be in school, but in order to do so safely, masking is what we're going to need to, to do considering where we are in the pandemic right now. So some of the things that people brought up tonight, I thought this was a great visual that I wanted to show you about the impacts of masking or not masking in, within the school setting. So if we move from left to right, you'll see a positive teacher who's masked, who's around close contacts who are children. In that situation, only the positive teacher would have to isolate. The children would be able to return back to school the next day and not need to quarantine. For them, class continues. If you look at the, the next one where you have a COVID-positive teacher who's not masked, if her students are masked and are within six feet of her, then the teacher would have to isolate and all those children, even though they're masked, are going to need to quarantine for 14 days. The next scenario, if you have a COVID-positive child, two of the children are masked and within six feet, but one child is unmasked and within six feet, then that one unmasked child is going to need to quarantine. And then the final situation is a COVID-positive kid without a mask on. Then all three of those close contacts would need to mask. I'm sorry, would need to quarantine. So again, this is about keeping kids in school. It's about keeping teachers safe because I do want to emphasize as well that teachers are such an important part of this scenario because if they would become positive, they too themselves would have to go out or if they would be exposed and not masked, they themselves would need to quarantine. So based on what I presented tonight, I come back to the same recommendation that I had when we met on the 27th, which is to focus on the mitigating factors of the spread of the virus in light of the highly contagious Delta variant and to adhere to the Strong Schools North Carolina Toolkit recommended for K-8, which is to wear face coverings when indoors. Require all passengers and staff to wear face coverings on buses, vans, and other group transportation per the CDC order. Ensure face coverings are worn indoors by all individuals not vaccinated, grades nine through 12. And then follow the physical distancing protocols outlined in the Strong Schools North Carolina Toolkit. And again, I base that recommendation on our county's low vaccination rate of 38%, the highly transmissible Delta variant, and then the increasing positivity rate, which now stands at 17.7%. And I'll turn it back to you, over to you, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. I want to clarify one thing that you said. When you started talking about quarantining, we will be following, the school system, working with your department, we'll be following page 13 out of the toolkit that describes how quarantining would go about, correct?
That is correct.
And then I want to make sure everyone remembers how we operated last year. Our goal is to keep everyone informed and so if we have a COVID event, we post weekly the count by schools, the number of COVID-19 confirmed cases among students and employees. And the schools also communicate weekly to their respective parents and employees with a summary of their confirmed cases. If there's a need to quarantine a student, the school contacts the affected families directly and provides them with information and instruction regarding their quarantine situation. If we have to close an entire classroom or a school, then the school provides that information and instructions to the entire school community. Our administration should be commended. They did, as often as they could, a one-on-one communication with each student affected, whether it be a positive or a quarantine situation. And we will try to maintain that standard. As many of you saw in the spring, when we encountered larger numbers of quarantining, that took quite a lot of time. Another thing to remember is that when students are away from school and quarantined, their coursework and assignments will be available to them if they're in elementary through the Schoology Learning Management System, if they're in sixth through 13 through the Canvas Learning Management System. And that's the way that coursework will be for the quarantined students to be able to stay working with their schools, to stay current with their classwork while they're out of schools. Mr. Chair?
Yes, before we move forward, I was going to ask for a five-minute recess. Thank you.
We're back from recess. We had a technical difficulty with the Zoom. Brent Moore, so he's back on. We lost power. Sorry about that, Brent. So now we're going to open up the floor for questions to Steve Eaton and Dr. Booker. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Eaton, are most of these cases from unvaccinated people, do you have a percentage of vaccinated versus unvaccinated, all the new cases?
Probably all, I do not. I know that of the new positives, close to 90%, a little over 90% are of the unvaccinated and those who are being hospitalized are also over 90% unvaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Eaton, were you able to determine out of the hospitalizations, how many are in that 4 to 18 age group, if any?
So we were able to reach out to one hospital that stated that, and they primarily received the pediatric cases for hospitalizations, and they stated that they've had, since June 2020, they've had 19 inpatients. They've had three kids, they had three kids in 2020, 16 for 2021, and since May of this year, they've had four inpatients in pediatric cases in hospital.
And those are Gaston County?
Those are Gaston County citizens, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, I appreciate that, Chairman. Mr. Eaton, just a few questions. Do you have numbers on how many children we have in the hospital here in Gaston County?
As of right now, I do not know of any at Caramont. I do not know of any, we have two outside of Gaston County that are hospitalized.
Okay, but in Gaston County, we have no school-aged children in the hospital?
Two Gaston County residents.
Okay. But what you're saying is they're not at Caramont, they're elsewhere?
That's correct.
Okay, and how many in the ICU?
I do not know that.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Eaton, during the last school year, how many cases were reported, you know, in that group, 4 to 18, and how many were hospitalized? Do you know?
I do not know. Have that data in front of me. I can certainly get that for you.
With this new variants, do you feel like it's worse than it was when we started our virtual learning?
So that's a really good question. It's a question we get a lot. What we've seen is the transmissibility or the spread of the Delta variant is so much more contagious than where we were last year. It's not necessarily more severe in terms of seeing people with different symptoms or different outcomes. It just spreads so much more quickly and it's so much more contagious. So kind of like what I was pointing out before, one person typically gets about seven people infected versus the original strain was like one person to 2.3 people. So you put that out into the community, in a low-vaccinated community like Gaston County, it's spreading like wildfire, much of like what you heard the physician say this evening. And when that happens, and those who are either not vaccinated or can become ill and can become hospitalized. And I do want everybody to remember what the intent of vaccines were. They were designed to, one, reduce severe illness, two, to keep people out of hospitals, and three, keep people from dying. And so what we're seeing is the vaccines are working very, very well because they're doing those three things, keeping people from becoming severely ill, hospitalized, and dying. The unvaccinated are the ones who are entering the hospital with severe illnesses and unfortunately are beginning to expire. We just recently had five pass away here in Gaston County.
You recommend masks. What type of mask? I've seen hundreds of different types.
Yeah, you know, I think truly having a good, solid face covering right now would prevent the spread. Obviously, surgical masks work very, very well. So I use a surgical mask, and so they've been proven to be more effective than cloth masks. But really, having kids in face masks, and I'll point you back to the CDC recommendations in the Strong Schools Toolkit around types of masks.
Thank you.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to thank you for supporting our efforts here with Gaston County Schools. I have two questions. One, do you know of any children from Gastonia or Gaston County who have been admitted to Levine in Charlotte?
I'm looking at my CD nurse right now. We're both kind of hesitant in naming the hospital based on just HIPAA requirements. So I would just say we do know of two that are hospitalized at nearby hospitals.
Thank you. And the second question is, do your nurses and the nurses that work with Gaston County Schools have any plans for maybe holding a vaccine clinic for families once school began?
We would gladly host a vaccine clinic or connect folks to a clinic wherever and whenever possible. We are so very fortunate right now that there are vaccines readily available. We have partnerships with Contegra. We have partnerships with the hospital. We have partnerships with StarMed, which is a state-deployed testing resource, and then we have the ability to vaccinate. So we all the time get requests and go out to local businesses and certainly will vaccinate wherever and whenever possible.
Thank you.
You'll be back this weekend as a follow-up to two of our school locations you were at two weeks ago, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And one thing that I didn't point out in my presentation, I do want to highlight is, Gaston County Government just recently instituted masks for all indoor government facilities that are run by county admin. So for example, regardless of vaccine status, and same with the courthouse as well. So it is becoming more and more utilized here in the county.
Mr. Eaton, you mentioned, and this is just a curious question, I don't know if you have an answer, but you mentioned that this variant is much more contagious. Is there one element that's causing that or just this mutation? I mean, that's interesting to me, why people are much more susceptible to this one.
Yeah, I'm not an expert in virology, but probably one of the physicians in there could do a much better job at that than I could. But yeah, I think the concern is also just in an unvaccinated population, we have concern for the Delta variant, but obviously, in a large unvaccinated community, what's the next variant? Because that's how viruses begin to mutate and become stronger.
Mr. Davis?
What percentage of these new Delta infections are folks that are newly infected getting COVID for the first time versus what percentage are reinfections? In other words, folks that have had COVID before?
Yeah, I do not have that in front of me in terms of, you're talking about breakthrough cases?
Yes, sir. I mean, either folks who have, well, really just referring to folks who have had COVID before that are now getting it a second time. I mean, how many of these new infections that we've seen here in Gaston County over the last three or four weeks are those?
Yeah. So I do know, last week, I received a report from the state that in Gaston County, we had 68 breakthrough cases of individuals who were either, who were fully vaccinated. I do not know of individuals who had, who were not vaccinated, who previously had COVID and had it for a second time, such as like what you're speaking to is natural immunity. I don't have a breakdown of that.
Anyone else have any?
Just a follow-up on Mr. Davis's questions. Are you, and maybe you can't answer it, but are you aware of any reinfections, if you will?
Yeah, well, as far as reinfection of somebody who had previously had COVID?
Yes.
That's what I mean. I do not know of anyone who's previously had it who is unvaccinated. We do know of individuals who have been fully vaccinated, who have become infected. But I can certainly check with our CD team in our hospital and see if I can get an accurate report on that.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions for Dr. Booker or Steve Eaton?
Would you just, for the people that are watching, would you just repeat one more time the difference in the quarantine for the different masking scenarios, just so that we're all on the same page?
Perfect. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
So just to look back last year, the way the guidance spoke in the Strong Schools Toolkit was that everybody, and with the governor's mandate, everybody entering school had to be masked. And then if somebody was masked and was positive, then anybody within six feet of that individual for 15 minutes or more, they would need to quarantine. This current guidance now provides a good out, a good option for masking in that if everybody is universally masked and somebody becomes positive, only the positive person has to isolate. However, under the current situation, if you have children who are in the school based on choice, who come in who are not masked, if they test positive, then anybody within six feet of them, regardless if they have a mask on or not, will be sent home for 14 days, which could potentially happen multiple times throughout the school year, especially if we continue on this rate of high infection in Gaston County.
Mr. Davis? Oh, you're fine there. Any other questions for Mr. Eaton or Dr. Booker?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if that's proper. I would like to make a motion that we, for the next 30 days, the next calendar month, that we go back to wearing masks in our schools, inside the school building for all people inside the building, as also on the bus. On the athletic fields or outside, we will not have to wear a mask. That can be optional. And I do realize that this is a tough call for all of us, but we are, we can't give a vaccine to those people that are eight years and younger. And you know, as much as I want to help all those parents and support them that don't want to wear masks, we are obligated to protect all those kids that can't protect themselves. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Dedman, a second by Ms. Guthrie. Now we can have discussions. Ms. Jerry?
Well, I'd like to make a statement first. First of all, I want to thank every single person that took the time to write us, to speak, to share your feelings, your views, and your opinions, and offered, the ones that offered suggestions and data regarding your stance, no matter what your stance was. And as Mr. Dedman has indicated, and I think we all have expressed, this is not an easy, it's not an easy decision. Everybody has a different opinion, a different reason for what they believe in, and we understand that. But, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us, we were elected to do what's best for the children in our system and to make sure that their educational needs, as well as all the other needs, are met. And after listening to Mr. Eaton and to Dr. Booker and to getting the latest information, the alarming information, which we didn't expect, we got it today, I think that we are moving in the right direction to go to masks. And as this Delta variant unfolds, hopefully, it will reverse and go on a downward spiral so that we can get back to what we all want to get back to. So I hope that y'all will work with us and support us to get our kids in a healthy situation so we can get back to normal. So thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
May I make a statement, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Charles Dickens began his 1859 novel, A Tale of Two Cities, with these words, "It was the best of times; it was the worst of times; it was the age of wisdom; it was the age of foolishness; it was the spring of hope; it was the winter of despair. We had everything before us; we had nothing before us. We were all going direct to heaven; we were all going direct the other way." A Tale of Two Cities shows that sacrifice is necessary to save yourself and those whom you love. I love the 28,000-plus students that will enter our schools next week. Tonight, I don't like being in the situation that I'm in at this moment, but Thursday morning, my decision was confirmed when I watched the Ethics webinar, one that all school board members in North Carolina must watch. When I heard school board members should make decisions based on facts, we heard the facts tonight. And tonight, I want parents, I want teachers, I want children, I want young people to know that, as I stated in July, we're all in this together, and we're going to make it. If we work together, we'll make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Collier?
It sounds like this board is moving to mandate mask. One quick clarification, and then I have some comments. In the motion, you said 30 days. Is that September the 16th? Our next board meeting is September the 20th.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to reinstate. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you'll clear that up?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Like Ms. Guthrie, I, this is, this is an impossible position for most of the board and, and you're going to hear a little bit of cynicism from me. I went to church yesterday. I went to a restaurant for Saturday night and again Sunday afternoon, and then went by a baseball game. And before that, I saw Saturday while I was out swimming at pools and then an event yesterday afternoon indoors and again Sunday night. I mean, I've been around this weekend and there are virtually no masks being worn by children. I mean, just no children wearing masks anywhere and no adults for the most part, very, very few masks in all those settings. So if we mandate masks, we may be the only place requiring that, that children are wearing masks. And with that said, with the number of unvaccinated people in this county, we're going to have COVID in our schools. It's, it's, that's, now that to me is just, not prophecy, but it's just something that's going to happen with the number of unvaccinated people. So with COVID in the school, what's just really hit me between the eyes is the quarantine protocol we have to follow. And with the protein, the, the protocol we have to follow with quarantine just really, to me, puts us in a corner of no decision. But to mandate masks for this short period of time until we see what the numbers are like, because we're going to, we won't be able to have school. Because, and I hate to repeat myself, but we're going to have COVID and we're going to have quarantine problems and probably more so than even children is teachers. When we start losing our teachers, you know, we can't even do it online or even assign their homework. So, I mean, I guess they can do some online, but losing teachers in front of children is even going to be more detrimental to Gaston County schools than quarantining children, which is bad enough as it is. So the quarantine protocol is, is pushing me to support this as reluctant and as cynical as I am about it. But those are my comments and you're welcome to them.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Mr. Davis?
Well, I'll echo the sentiments of my fellow board members that this is a tough decision and a tough night. We've heard from a lot of our, of our parents and families and constituents. And, and, and I mean, there have been a lot of folks that want us to institute a mask mandate because whether we do or not, they're sending their kids to school in masks. And, and there are a lot of other folks out there, and I think the majority of folks out there would like us to maintain choice. And, and this is a hard decision, but I, we've been dealing with COVID now for 18 months. And, and I think parents know their children and know what's best for them. I still think parents should have this choice. There are differing views and differing opinions, and I think all those differing views and opinions ought to be respected. But I think you're right, Mr. Collier, that, that we're seeing children everywhere not marrying that, not wearing masks. And those are the, you know, those are the decisions that folks are making. And, and so I still think that our folks ought to have this choice. And I'll be voting against the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments from the board? But I want to echo what Vice Chair mentioned also. We have received a lot of input from our citizens of Gaston County, our parents. And we want to thank y'all for all the input you gave us. We, we know we're not in a no-win situation here. But I was like, my fellow member, Collier, the quarantine is the key, I think, to everything. Because if we start losing our students not coming to school and our teachers, we're not going to be able to move forward with our school year. So, and we thank Mr. Ayden and Mr. Booker for their guidance and all the data they've been able to provide us over 18 months. But even this time, we thought we was behind all this ourselves. We wanted choice. But right now, we have to move forward with what we have. But hopefully, you know, that'll happen. So I want to reinstate the mask indoors only through the week of September 20th until we meet again.
For review.
Right, for review. So. All for the motion on the floor? Please signify your hand. All opposed? Brent? Are you for or opposed? I can't hear.
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Count that. Ms. Clark, 6 to 3? 6 to 3. Okay. The motion, Cherry. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say that we know that our children will return and they will need many, many, I think, programs to help them to get on track again. I'm not going to say to repair learning loss, but to get on track again. And I just want you to know that when we visit the curriculum instruction meetings, Dr. Bognight and her staff are prepared for our children. They have programs that they are ready to implement and they have people in place who are ready to assess, to make certain that the needs, the diverse needs of our children are met. And I feel for certain that if children need to stay home, if they need to, that if our teachers are using Schoology and Canvas, that they will get the supplementary resources and instruction that they will need until they return to school.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie, and that's a good leeway. The next item on the agenda is a report from Curriculum Instruction Committee. Ms. Guthrie is the chair of that committee. And the other members are Justin Davis, Steve Hall and Robbie Lovelace. And who's going to do the report tonight? Ms. Lovelace?
Thank you. The Board of Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on July 12th, 2021. Members present were Doc Guthrie, Robbie Lovelace, Steve Hall, Justin Davis, Doc Cherry and Jeff Ramsey. The meeting was called to order at 12:05 PM. The Career and Technical Education Department provided a budget update on the CTE Local Application System Grant. Staff shared follow-up information regarding digital tickets for athletic events. Utilizing digital tickets will provide another option without eliminating the paper option. The committee also received information about middle school athletic eligibility for the 2021-2022 school year. The Leader in Me Academy is a choice program that in our Dallas feeder schools. The academy has a strong foundation in leadership and culture. Gaston College will provide our high school academy students with a leadership certification upon completion of the program. The ESL department completed the curriculum adoption process and selected Harcourt. English 3D as the ESL curriculum to be implemented in grades three through 12 for the 2021-2022 school year. The meeting adjourned at 1:56 PM. The second meeting was held on August 9th, 2021. Members present were Doc Guthrie, Robbie Lovelace, Steve Hall, Justin Davis, Doc Cherry and Jeff Ramsey. The meeting was called to order at 12 o'clock PM. Chef's, staff shared with the committee information about Ticket Spicket. Ticket Spicket will provide a digital ticketing program for athletic events beginning fall 2021. Dragonfly is providing a digital platform to access athletic forms. The typical forms required by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association in Gaston County schools can be completed through the platform. Technology Support Services updated the committee on the purchase of additional student chrome books for the Gaston Virtual Academy during the 2021-2022 school year. The Student Support Services Department will apply for a McKinney Vento sub grant for $120,000. The grant will provide tutoring at a homeless shelter and additional professional development opportunities for social, school social workers. The committee received information about the Superintendent's Leadership Academy and a potential partnership with Gardner Web University. The Department for Exceptional Children recommended continuing a contract to provide services for visually impaired students for the 2021-2022 school year. Staff shared information about providing support to restart schools at all high schools. LMC Leadership Solutions will provide 60 days of professional development to support both areas. Case Benchmark Assessments in Canvas both have merged with the Instruction Company. Case will continue providing the benchmark assessments used in high schools. Canvas will continue as the learning management system utilized to support instruction in grade six through 12. The meeting adjourned at 1:22 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. The next item on the agenda is the report from the Operations Committee. Chairman is Lee Dedman. The other members are Doc Cherry, Kevin Collier and Brent Moore. Mr. Dedman?
Ms. Cherry's going to give her report.
Thank you.
Okay, the Operations Committee met on Monday, August 2nd at 4:00 PM in the central office. Committee commit, consists of Chairman Lee Dedman, Kevin Collier, myself and Brent Moore. Agenda and discussion included the following. Associate Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer Gary Hoskins shared information regarding Gaston Aquatics Inc.'s proposal to build an aquatics center in Gaston County. Gaston Aquatics wants to purchase approximately 2.5 acres of land near Stuart Kramer High School. No purchase price was presented. Should the Board of Education consider such a sale, Gaston County Commissioners would have to agree to the sale. Further, the Board of Education would be required to follow the process set forth in the general statutes to dispose of real property. This matter will be discussed further by the Operations Committee. We currently own a property located at 425 South Ridge Street in Dallas. This property was subject of a plea agreement in a legal settlement years ago. It's a 1,418 square foot house built in 1971. The property is vacant and is not likely to be, be used for school purposes. The committee recommends that we declare the property, property as surplus and begin the disposal process of this property. A resolution supporting this recommendation is included in the consent agenda. Project Manager Chris Hall briefly updated us on the School Business System Modernization, or SBSM, project. The SBSM project is state-funded by North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Oracle will be, will be replacing our district's primary human resources, finance and payroll system. And I think all of our employees know something about this. Our new finance system in Oracle went live, our new finance system in Oracle went live on July 1, 2021. HR and payroll systems are scheduled to go live on October 1, 2021. Exempt employees will remain on a monthly payroll, generally on the 27th of each month. Non-exempt employees will move to a bi-weekly payroll every other Friday. We will be paying exempt employees more often since the new process is more efficient and streamlined. Chad Duncan, Director of Athletics, discussed adding a $25 per day charge for extra cleaning as a result of COVID. Groups using our facilities for multiple days or weeks will pay only $80 for the cleaning services. Our Executive Director of HR, Joey Clinton, informed us that 261 new employees have recently been hired. 217 of these new hires are teachers and 331 of those are new teachers. So, welcome new teachers. Each school was given one additional teacher allotment due to COVID. This year, there were approximately 100 retirements, which is more than our, our yearly average. The Safe School Module for all employees have been sent out for the 200, excuse me, y'all, the 2021-2022 school year. Tips for the first-year teachers and the Teaching and Learning Conference have both taken place for this year and were very successful. Angela Calamia, the Director of School Nutrition, the very good Director of School Nutrition, reported information from the 2020-2021 school year. She will make this presentation to the entire board during this meeting. Project Manager Paul Knoll gave updates on the new Belmont Middle School. The grand opening ribbon and ribbon cutting was held yesterday, August 15th, and it was a very grand event for those of y'all who missed it. The auctioning of used furniture and equipment took place on July 24th and the transfer of the old Belmont Middle School to the county is expected to be completed at the end of the month. Morgan Hushard, Executive Director of Auxiliary Services, shared current and upcoming capital and summer projects. Gary Hoskins discussed the existing $60 million bond disbursements. All funds have been allocated except for $588,501. Staff has worked with the architect to determine the best location to build another middle school. We also reviewed information from our Facilities Department regarding the condition of our buildings. Based on this, this information, the committee recommends that Greer Middle School be the next replacement school. A resolution supporting this recommendation is included on the board agenda. Contracts for transportation, life safety at Carr Elementary and New Hope Elementary, stadium lights at Forest View, lawn care and landscaping, cellular telephone, WAN and VoIP, I think I'm saying that right, were all recommended for approval from the board and will appear on the consent agenda. And our next meeting is scheduled for September the 13th at 4:00 PM here in the central office boardroom. And that's my report, and sorry for the mess ups.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry.
You're welcome.
Thank you for both committees for working for, on behalf of our students, staff and parents. Next on the agenda is back-to-school update, and this is the information item, and Todd Hagens will present.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the board and Superintendent Booker. It is a pleasure to present our back-to-school update for the 2021-22 academic year. As we all know, it is back-to-school time in Gaston County and Monday, August the 23rd is our first day of school. We expect to welcome approximately 29,000 students in pre-kindergarten through high school. That includes more than 1,800 kindergarten students who are beginning their K-12 educational journey with us. We are continuing to enroll students this week and we encourage parents to go ahead and take care of enrollment so their children are ready to go for the first day on Monday. More than 1,900 teachers in Gaston County schools will return to our classrooms and this includes 130, more than 130 first-year teachers who are new to the education profession. So what is happening in our schools this week? Our schools are conducting meetings for faculty and staff. Our employees are engaged in professional development. Teachers are preparing classrooms and orientation and open house programs are scheduled. A list of the orientation and open house events are available, that you can find that list on our website. On Wednesday, we will have our back-to-school convocation for employees and it will be held in webinar format. The program features messages from Superintendent Booker, Chairman Ramsey and our Teacher and Principal of the Year. Convocation also includes a professional development portion for school employees that gives them an opportunity to reflect on last year and re-energize and focus on what they want to accomplish in the new school year. What better way to celebrate back-to-school than with baseball? We are partnering with the Gastonia Honey Hunters to present back-to-school nights for Gaston County schools on Tuesday and Wednesday. During pre-game ceremonies, student athletes from our high schools will be recognized with East Gaston, Highland, Stuart W. Kramer, Hunter Huss and Forest View taking the spotlight on Tuesday and Ashbrook, Cherivale, Besmer City, North Gaston and South Point being honored on Wednesday. Anyone associated with Gaston County schools can attend and receive a $2 discount on your ticket. We appreciate the Gastonia Honey Hunters working with us to host special evenings of baseball as we celebrate back-to-school time in Gaston County. Then on Monday, August the 23rd, we will have our first day of school coverage as our students and teachers start the brand-new school year. Now I would like to share some back-to-school highlights with you. Our schools- Our schools will operate five days a week using the start and end times that were implemented last year. Elementary schools will operate from seven-thirty A. M. until two-thirty P. M. Middle schools and high schools will operate from eight-thirty A. M. until three-thirty P. M. With our two-tier schedule, bus drivers are able to run two routes rather than just one in the morning and in the afternoon, an elementary route first, and then a middle or high school route. The process is intended to get students to school and back home in a timely manner and ensure that there are enough bus drivers. Please note that students and drivers are required to wear a face covering or a mask while riding on the school bus or an activity bus per the federal requirements for public transportation. Bus routes will be, buses will be cleaned and disinfected after morning and afternoon routes, and parents will receive information from their child's school about bus routes and pickup and drop-off times. Academic achievement is our top priority, and in an effort to mitigate learning loss as a result of the pandemic, schools will concentrate attention on helping students to build on what they learned last year. With a focus on small-group enrichment lessons and activities, teachers will be able to review materials and concepts in subjects like math and reading and personalize learning to, and have personalized learning to address content areas where students need the most help. Schools also will offer various programs to support students socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. Additional highlights include a new program for pre-kindergarten students that teaches them about social and behavior skills. Students in the fifth grade will engage in career awareness opportunities through our Career and Technical Education Program, and the District's Composer Program, which is designed for students who demonstrate qualities of being academically and intellectually gifted, expands to all of our Title I elementary schools. We have a continued focus on school safety. In addition to encouraging the health and safety procedures related to COVID-nineteen, schools will follow its protocol to keep the school environment safe and secure for students and employees. Schools will continue the practice of random metal detection screenings for students and staff. Additionally, metal detection screenings and bag checks will be in place for athletic events such as high school football games. It is recommended that spectators do not bring bags into athletic events. Doing so only slows down the entrance line because those bags need to be checked. Also, schools will conduct evacuation lockdown and tornado severe weather drills periodically, and the internal two-way radio communication system used by schools is being upgraded with the replacement of analog walkie-talkies with digital ones. We also have our COVID-nineteen procedures, and Dr. Booker shared information about those earlier, and we will post that information on our website. It is worth mentioning several items that we have for you as students and teachers head back to school. Our students will receive breakfast and lunch meals free of charge. This is made possible again this year through the USDA's National School Lunch Program. New menu items include chicken wings for middle schools and high schools and chicken drummies for elementary schools. Some schools have chosen to implement the grab-and-go breakfast option for students. Students will be issued a Chromebook computer for use at school and at home, and providing a computing device for each student was done for the first time when the pandemic began to support remote learning. Each school will be assigned a full-time nurse to provide additional health-related support and care for students. Previously, some nurses were assigned to two schools. Motorists are reminded of heavy traffic near schools in the early morning and mid-afternoon hours. It is important for motorists to decrease speed in school zones, watch for pedestrians, and use caution when they see a school bus. If parents have a question or concern, they are encouraged to contact their child's teacher or the school principal to discuss the issue or schedule a meeting. Parents are reminded to make sure that their child's school has up-to-date contact information. This includes the home address, telephone number, and your email address. So, what's ahead? There are three items that I would like to mention that are coming up this year. We will continue the Do the Right Thing recognition program with the Gaston Gazette. This partnership gives our schools an opportunity to recognize deserving students for their efforts to do the right thing. We will have monthly winners, and then in April, we will plan to have a ceremony to honor all of the winners. The next edition of our state and national award-winning Gaston County Schools Storybook will be published this fall, and we're also updating Channel Twenty-One so that people will be able to watch our education station through the district website. This update will give us a modern messaging billboard feature, and it extends our viewing audience beyond Spectrum Cable subscribers. So, a brand-new school year is here. Students, parents, and school employees are looking ahead to the new year with enthusiasm and optimism with hopes of experiencing a school routine that is as normal as possible while still navigating the effects of the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic. It is the goal of all teachers and school employees to see students grow and thrive this school year. And we encourage everyone to stay connected with Gaston County schools by visiting our district and school websites, downloading our mobile app, watching Channel Twenty-One, and keeping up with us on social media. And, Mr. Chairman, that completes our back-to-school update for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins, and thank you for all your hard work. Next item is the Student Intervention and Support, Dr. Bucknay.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, and members of the Board, and Superintendent Booker. I would like to invite my team up. They'll actually be completing the presentation this evening. That all of these areas are working collaboratively together to support our students as they come back to school. And while Ms. Minnick does not have a part of the presentation tonight, I will say that they are also integrated, our AIG Services and Exceptional Children's Services and Pre-K, and everything that we plan for the upcoming school year.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, Superintendent Booker, members of the Board. Tonight, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Bennett, Dr. Bostick, and I would like to share with you the plans Academic Services has in place to provide interventions and support to the students of Gaston County schools. Gaston County schools will implement a multi-tiered system of support framework for all students in grades K through twelve. We will use data to focus on the growth of the whole child by promoting individual student performance growth, using engaging research-based academic and behavioral practices, integrating social and emotional learning into what we do, and providing interventions that improve attendance rates among all of our students. MTSS is the umbrella that encompasses everything we do to meet the needs of all of our learners in the district using prevention, intervention, and enrichment. Looking at the progression of supports, first, we must focus on attendance and make sure that students are in school so that they can have access to the instruction provided. Then, we must create an environment that engages student in learning. We must teach them what it means to be successful behaviorally and monitor their progress and intervene when necessary. In academics, we must meet the students where they are and provide the right tool and the right instruction to accelerate their growth. We will embed social-emotional learning into all we do to ensure that we are monitoring and responding to the needs in regards to the social and emotional health of our students. Action steps that will help us reach our goals this year include our elementary and middle schools having a forty-five-minute block allocated every day where students will be engaged in the intentional interventions and enrichment activities based on their individual data. We will also be providing every school with research-based resources that are proven to close achievement gaps as well as extend learning because they are specifically assigned and aligned based on the data of the individual student. Each of our resources that we will be using will be providing professional development, not only around best practices and implementation, but Spire and Mega Words also have a strong focus on the science of reading. Our final piece includes data. We will start by identifying students' needs using data, and then we will monitor the student's response to instruction and the response to intervention through our focused team structure. Each team will analyze student data regularly to determine if we need to adapt our plan in order to keep students on their pathway for maximum growth.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to provide you an update on elementary summer camp and our support that we will provide for teachers and students this year. This year, we were required to offer thirty days or one hundred and fifty hours of summer learning opportunities for students. We decided on one hundred and fifty hours over a six-week period for our students. One of the way we tracked our students' progress throughout our summer camp was to give them the I-R-E-D diagnostic at the end of summer camp. When students complete the I-R-E-D assessment, they are grouped into tiers. When a student is classified as a Tier One student, they're one or more grade levels. On or above a grade level, Tier Two, they're one grade level below, and when they're Tier Three, they're two or more grade levels below. We had one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine students attend our summer camp. The great news, the data on the screen, is that those students that were Tier Three and Tier Two, twenty-five percent of those students when they took the assessment at the end of summer camp are now Tier One students. For those students that were Tier Three at the end of the year when they took the assessment at the end of summer camp, forty-two percent of those students are now Tier Two students. The great news about that, we're in great positions for those students as they come back to school five days a week to continue to work to ensure that those students can become Tier One students. And the importance of being a Tier One student is, we know the data and the research has shown when the students take the integrated assessment at the end of the year, they have a high probability of being successful in the integrated assessment. The second focus of summer camp was professional learning, and what I'm most excited about is the numbers on the screen. When you look at, we decided the sound sensible, inspiring, you hear a lot about the science of reading. Spire meets that category, but also we adopted a new math curriculum. So, we had five hundred and ninety-nine teachers attend the Spire Reading Training, six hundred and thirty-three attend the Math Ready Training. That's almost a hundred percent of our staff who attended professional development this summer that will help us close gaps when students return to school in August. The one I'm really excited about is the one hundred and fifty-five teachers. Normally, you get professional development in isolation. One of the things that we've tried to do, once they have the professional development, they get time to practice and implement the professional development that they have been a part of. One hundred and fifty-five of our teachers participated in three weeks of coaching and developing look-forers for those curriculums and getting feedback on whether they were implementing them correctly. And I think what will happen is they get to go back to our thirty elementary schools, and they will be the leaders in the school to make sure that we can execute the curriculum and close learning gaps. Support for teachers. We began a journey with Modern Teacher three years ago to personalize learning for our students. One of the products that we have produced from our partnership with Modern Teacher is proficiency scales. So, you will hear proficiency scales a lot in K- Five. And what I'm excited about is, if you look at the snapshot on the screen, we talk a lot about learning gaps, and you will hear a lot about learning gaps. What the proficiency skills will do, if you look at it, we have a Level One or Level Two. Those are all the skills a student should have learned in the previous grades. So, our teachers will have a document for all of our tested standards that will tell them where the gaps are as they're teaching the content. Normally, you would see us look at a percent on a test and say a student is seventy percent or sixty percent, but those proficiency scales for us is a game changer because we will know where the gaps are as we're teaching the content standard. And a Level Three will tell us kids that are on grade level. The pre- and post-assessment, the pre-assessment will be used before a student starts to learn the standard that will tell them where the gaps are so they can work with their teacher, and the post-assessment will be used after to see our students on grade level. To help support those proficiency scales, we will have district-wide PLCs that will be virtually as we work with our teachers to be able to implement those. For our students, like Dr. Payne said, we will continue to have flex time. In E.L.A., math is forty-five minutes, but they also will work with the proficiency scales. And you can see from the picture, these will be displayed in the classroom. Our students will use them in their data notebook. The first line depicts all of the skills they should have learned before they got to that grade level. So, students will be able to use the pre- and post-assessment to also track their progress to mastery content standards. And what I'm also excited about is our parent support sessions. Throughout the pandemic, we have had great support from parents in attending our parent-teacher conferences and attending a lot of parent nights. We will continue to offer live sessions that will be around the standard their child is learning. So, it's almost like they can take the parent guides that we will develop, and they can put it on a refrigerator, and they can know every day their child comes home what they should be learning and how they can support their child. So, I am very excited about the support that we will provide for not only our teachers, our students, and our parents.
Yes, Ms. Catherine.
Dr. Jackson, you said "I'm excited about this" or that several times, and it just gets me even more excited. I like the idea of doing that pre-assessment, and then you're going to have time then to develop that personalized learning for the child and then monitor it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This is just super, super, super. And the great thing, I'm excited like you, parents have become more involved, and that's the whole key, that parental piece is there now. So, we want to do everything that we can in order to maintain that piece as well. Thank you so much.
What better way to remind them to put a magnet on the refrigerator?
We love it. We love it. Love it.
Good evening.
Members of the Board, this is Dr. Chris Bennett, who joined our organization.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come forward tonight to speak about middle schools and our plans for the upcoming school year. So, over the course of the summer, four hundred and thirty students attended summer camp across three sites in Gaston County, engaging with reading, math, science, and C.T.E. content. Students were administered a pre- and post-assessment to determine the impact of summer camp. For reading, fifty-five point eight percent of students demonstrated growth with an average gain of thirteen and a half points. For math, sixty-two point seven percent of students showed growth with an average of eight point two points. Summer camp teachers had the opportunity to learn new strategies during their work this summer. They were able to employ these strategies with their summer camp students, and we use these strategies as we return to school in their core classes and their intervention instruction as well. You see on the screen, teachers were trained in the following programs: Mega Words, Transmath. Teachers were to unpack E.L.A. and math standards. They completed instructional rounds, and they completed the first two days of reading research classroom practice, which is a five-day training, the other three days will take place this fall. Coming in August, we have an exciting new addition to middle schools. We're calling this Connections. Connections will be a forty-five-minute block built into each middle school's master schedule. It is designed to be a period of time for teachers to meet every student where they are and provide instruction at that level which will challenge all students in the building. During this time, students need additional supports to build skills for success in reading or math core instruction will work in small groups with teachers. Schools will progress monitor students in order to ensure that all students are making adequate progress. For students not requiring specific literacy or math interventions, they will be placed in enrichment groups, providing additional opportunities for students to be challenged at their level to continue to grow in core areas. Additionally, one day each week will be designated for social-emotional learning for all students as we continue to focus on growing the whole child. Some additional supports that middle school students will be provided this year. We're going to have, each middle school will have an after-school daily tutoring program available for all students. These small-group settings will allow students to receive additional help beyond the school day. Schools have planned Schools have plans in place to ensure families are aware of these opportunities. Additionally, middle school staff will continue to focus on building teacher capacity and collective advocacy through their work in professional learning communities, which will support core and tiered instruction. PLCs will focus on the four critical questions. One, what do we want students to know and be able to do? Two, how do we know if they've learned it? Three, what are we going to do if they haven't learned it? And four, if they already know it, how are we going to extend their learning? In addition to this, we're going to, our three big ideas that we're going to focus on are learning, collaboration, and creating a results-oriented culture within our buildings. Doing this will ensure success for all students regardless of their level. Lastly, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, we also have parent resources available for families with middle-grade students through Gaston County, through the Gaston County Schools website. These resources provide course overviews and strategies parents can help use, and we will ensure that families do know this through school. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bennett, first, I want to welcome you. Did you say that, you did say every middle school would have after-school tutoring, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And when will that assessment take place so that we will know how to push that child in those areas that he or she may be weak?
For the intervention block.
Yes.
In course today. Dr. Payne and her team have worked alongside us, and we're going to start that within the first fifteen days of school to ensure that we are starting and hitting the ground running as hard as we can to meet all students where they are and push them to grow.
That is awesome. You're leaving no child behind. That's an old slogan, but that is really good.
Yes, ma'am. It's been a great joint effort with academic services, student support, and the DUC. So we appreciate their help.
Great. It is.
Just like our elementary and middle levels, high school also started their work this summer. We were fortunate to have six hundred and twelve students attend our summer camp. Summer camp for the majority of our high schools was to recover their high school credits that they had previously missed, and we were able to recover three hundred and twenty-two credits for our students, which is huge. We also had an intervention camp, and we had a small, relatively smaller number of students that attended that intervention camp, one hundred and twenty-six. But the real benefit, as Dr. Jackson described, was for our teachers for that. Because teachers received math and reading foundations training, which helped them to understand how students best learn math and reading concepts, and provided them with practical and beneficial instructional practices to incorporate in their classrooms. Teachers were also trained on how to use a math intervention tool, which is the Transmath, and a reading intervention tool, which is Mega Words. Having camp follow these professional developments allowed the teachers to practice what they had learned and be coached on their implementation by our facilitators. Fourteen teachers attended the math training camp and eighteen attended the reading camp. Well, that sounds like a very small number if we remember that out of our twelve high schools, the majority of our high schools often only have one math nine, English nine, sorry, one math, one teacher, and one English nine teacher. So that fourteen and eighteen number is a really good turnout for that. The remaining teachers will be trained this Wednesday on August the eighteenth in those interventions. In addition, the support that we'll be providing this school year, our high schools were provided their eighth-grade reading and math I-Ready data for their incoming ninth graders to allow them to strategically schedule their students based on their learning needs. Many of our schools are offering a Foundations of English and/or a Foundations of Math course that will allow students to receive those interventions and those tools that we previously discussed. And really, to be able to hone in on those skills that they need to be successful in English nine and Math One. The use of Transmath and Mega Words intervention tools will continue on into English nine and Math One. And we would also like to begin using the new Math One resource, Envision, that you all approved for us to purchase, I think, a meeting ago. This will allow our students to go ahead and begin that implementation and begin utilizing that support and the interventions that are within that resource this year rather than waiting. And so you will see that we have made a request to add one additional year to that contract so that we can go ahead and implement high school this year instead of next year, and that's part of the consent agenda for this evening. Schools have also received funds to provide before-school tutoring for select core classes as well as during the day tutoring for our Math One students. Opportunities to recover credits will continue to be offered before school, after school, and during the school day. And as Dr. Payne indicated, social-emotional learning is an important aspect of the multi-tiered system of support for students. Social-emotional lessons will occur for the high school students throughout the semester during advisory time. As we know, parents are an integral part of a student's success in school, and so parent resources are available at the high school level as well. That is that document that kind of lists the columns. There's math, science, social studies. And of course, we have also included ACT and pre, ACT and SAT resources as well to be able to support our students and their parents as they try to work through these various subject areas and those major test prep. We appreciate your time in allowing us to share with you what we are doing to support students, teachers, and parents K-12 in instruction.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. That's so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bach, Knight, and your team. Next on the agenda is the summer project updates, and I think this is Dr. Morgan Hushaw.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Board of Education members. It's good to be here with you this evening. I appreciate you allowing a few moments for me to discuss summer projects with you tonight. I want to take a moment to thank publicly all of the men and women who work with Auxiliary Services team. When I say Auxiliary Services, I'm referring to all those who work with school nutrition, facilities and maintenance, transportation, construction, safety, and security. They have not missed a day or a beat since March of 2020. They've kept our system running strong. So I'm honored to work with them and proud to be a part of their team. I want to first discuss an overview of the twenty-one summer projects. Many of these projects have been completed. Some of them are in the process of being completed, and a few of them, we've been designing this summer to work on in the very near future. I also want to let you know that there are hundreds of other projects that have been completed this summer, but I'm not going to mention tonight because this is just a brief overview of the biggest ones. I want to start with life safety, which in most cases involves fire, panic, break-in alarm services, access entry, as well as cameras. We continue to complete three to four of these a year, and will continue to do so until we've upfit all of our buildings. Every year, we find ourselves replacing several generators. Generators are used to power lift stations, wells, pumps, lighting, and life safety equipment when there's a power outage. Roofs. I tell you what, we can expect a roof to last twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five years. We have many in our system that are thirty to thirty-five years old. Replacing a roof requires first, a design, and then the funding, which we now have thanks to our bond funds. I do want you to know that we take into account the age, and more importantly, the amount of work orders placed for each roof. Some of these are for partial roof replacements as well. And to date, we have, in the last three years, we have partially or totally replaced eight roofs total, have many in the works. We've now completed the tennis courts at South Point High School, and they look great. Our design team included drainage underneath the courts so we can expect a longer life out of it. Oftentimes, the cracking you see prematurely on tennis courts is due to water underneath them. So we're proud of these courts and look forward to many years of play on them by the PE classes at South Point High School and the tennis team. They look great. We continue to work on drainage issues and water damage problems. These can often be expensive to repair, and by the way, never get better with time. They only get worse. So I've included the picture here of Bessemer City High School. We've put some concrete for drainage repair, and that was completed earlier this month. And we have many projects in the works, half completed in design. Every summer, we try to upfit and renovate several of our elevators so that we are operational during the school year when they're needed most. Elevators normally require attention every ten years or so, and we now have a renovation cycle for all the elevators, so we're touching them at least every eight to ten, to ten Painting. We love to paint schools. I tell you what, you get a lot of bang for your buck when you can paint a school. And to date, we've painted ten schools in the last three years, so we're proud of that. We can now add Webb Street School to that list, and if you haven't been to Webb Street School, it looks amazing. We plan on painting three more schools this school year, and we'll continue on our maintenance cycle so that all schools get a fresh coat of paint with time. So with five and a half million square feet of space, we're always working and improving flooring somewhere. I can assure you, there's always a flooring project going on. We have completed a number of bigger projects this summer, and I've highlighted the much-needed Hawx Nest gym floor that is almost done being replaced with hardwood floors. And if you'd ever been in there, it was the snap-together flooring that just was not very conducive to play. You would not recognize a cafeteria at Hunter Huss anymore. All right, the facilities department is completing the total renovation of the dining room. It now has clean roofing lines with lay-in tile, LED lighting, and a new floor. It's a much warmer and inviting space for our students to enjoy their meals and their time together. And if you get a moment before, during school starts, I would recommend getting out there and taking a look at that facility. It is nice. We have seen how the school is improved by modern lighting. With LED lighting, we not only get a better lighting for our schools and our students, but we see a significant energy cost savings as well. We have been able to work on a few schools this summer as well as design several. We manage a lot of asphalt here in Gaston County schools, and unfortunately, much of it looks like this. What a difference new asphalt makes to the facade of our buildings and adds life to our parking lots. Drastic difference there, isn't it? Sure adds something to it. This summer, we completed paving at Bessemer City Middle and Bessemer City High School and have designs and are working on several other schools for the upcoming year. And as always, every summer, we always have to pump out our grease traps for our cafeterias as well as our lift stations at many schools in different locations. Excited about this, our transportation department has worked hard to ensure that all of our yellow buses now have a four-camera system. This replaces the dated two-camera system that remained on over half of our buses. This will enable principals to better solve issues and monitor student behavior. It's truly a game changer in the administration business as far as busing is concerned, and we're appreciative to Gary Hoskins, who made it possible with funding. And lastly, we were able to put the finishing touches on our newest middle school, Belmont Middle. We celebrated yesterday, as many of you know, the ribbon cutting and got a chance to show off a new building to the community, students, and teachers. Exciting day for us. And to conclude, we'd like to thank you, the Gaston County Board of Education, for your continued support and dedication to Gaston County schools. Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you for your department to implement all the bond updates. And as we mentioned yesterday at the grand opening, we want to thank the citizens of Gaston County for the $250 million bond where we can start implementing and upgrading all of our schools in Gaston County. And thank you for Gaston County Board of Commissioners also. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next on the item is a resolution to request the allocations of 2018 bond fund, and Gary Hoskins is going to have the next three items.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. Back in May 2018, the voters of Gaston County approved a $250 million school bond referendum. And later that year, November, the Gaston County Board of Commissioners issued $60 million of bonds, which we have used to construct a 160,000-square-foot replacement school in Belmont, which we just opened yesterday formally, as well as numerous needed renovations and repairs at existing schools, including new roofs, updated life safety systems, more efficient lighting and HVAC systems, site improvements, et cetera. Right now, we're about, we've either utilized or dedicated ninety-eight percent of that $60 million that the county has issued in that bond offer. So as Ms. Cherry mentioned earlier, at the Operations Committee, we discussed the next new school that we would like to pursue. And based on the age, condition, and location of the various schools that we looked at, which were primarily the middle schools, older middle schools, which had used to be high schools, we are recommending, or the Operations Committee has recommended that Greer Middle School be replaced. And the resolution states, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education requests that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners appropriate additional funds from the 2018 bond referendum to be used for enlarging, renovating, and maintaining existing school buildings and other school plant facilities, and for the construction of a new Greer Middle School in Gaston County, North Carolina." So, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation of the Operations Committee is for the board to approve this resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Moore.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution to request allocations of the 2018 bond funds.
I'll second.
And Ms. Cherry, second. So motion on the floor. And a second, my Ms. Cherry, any discussions? Mr. Davis?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Our committees do a lot of work, whether it's the Curriculum Instruction Committee or the Operations Committee, and I always appreciate that because it helps us get a lot done. And so that's a good thing. The one thing I was a little bit surprised to see in this resolution here tonight was that we have the construction of a new Greer Middle School in Gastonia, North Carolina. I was just surprised to see that in the resolution tonight without some presentation to the full board. I mean, I'm not saying I wouldn't support that, but it just, that's the kind of thing that I think I would have expected to see a presentation to the full board on. And I just would have liked to have, because I'm not on that committee, I would have liked to have at least understood.
Right.
More about that. And if you can speak to that, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. So we talked to an architect that has worked with us before on building schools, and we looked at several of the middle schools. As I mentioned, we really focus on the middle schools right now, the former high schools. Those were Holbrook, Mount Holly Middle, Greer Middle, and also Bessemer City Middle. Those were the older four high schools that we looked at. We worked with the architect and looked at the existing site because what we're thinking that we're probably going to have to do is going to be something similar to Stanley, in which is a two-phase project. And what we looked at was which schools have, first of all, the site capacity to be able to build a school on part of the site while we continue to operate that school. So we looked at those sites. We looked at how much money we've recently put into these schools. If you go to Holbrook Middle School, it looks like a brand-new school. We put in a lot of money. Chavis Middle School, we didn't look at it because we put in so much money. We're redoing, excuse me, we're redoing the Media Center at Mount Holly Middle School. We've just repaved, you know, the entire parking lot at Mount Holly Middle. So we looked at, you know, what is the current condition? You know, we've improved those conditions of a lot of those schools quite a bit over the last couple of years with this existing $60 million of bond money. And so, you know, what we, you know, the county wanted us to identify a specific property. And so that's what, you know, we're trying to meet their request. And so looking at Greer Middle School, I believe it's built, the core of it was built either 1955 or 1959. The most recent building on the campus was 2003, and that's the Media Center. However, when you look at the site plan, the Media Center is sort of nestled between all the 1955 or 59 buildings. You couldn't really carve that out. So you'd essentially, the entire campus, we would look at, you know, what we would do with that entire campus. We don't know that we could, you know, save any part of that. So, you know, obviously, we still have to do some due diligence because when you look at Greer, you've got the football field, if you're facing Greer, over on the left towards the Shield Museum. First of all, we've got to decide what kind of soil that is, and if that soil is, you know, you're able to be able to build a building there, or if that's really the best location... or if that's really the best location, do we need to, to, to decide that? So, you know, the fact that it's in Gastonia, you know, Gastonia's, it's been fairly stable, but we're talking about some other, uh, magnet-type, uh, middle schools, uh, in that area. So that's really how the committee came up with that, looking at the, you know, the fact that it, it can't really accommodate significantly more students, uh, as Belk, as Bessemer City Middle had plenty of capacity, Chavis had plenty of capacity. So that, those are some of the factors that we looked at, uh, with the, with the, uh, operations committee on how we came up with that.
Mr. Collier?
Mr. Davis, that's probably a lot of, um, our fault as the operations committee. I'll just say that because this has been a long, long identified list of schools to replace all our, as Mr. Hoskins said, all our old high schools. And this goes way back, uh, to which ones we kind of went first and with the, what bond money we had. And the easiest ones were Stanley, uh, because of the age, and Belmont was up at the top. And then, um, uh, and then as we went down the list, we, we're looking at the criteria, how do we do it and how we had the bond money to do it? Uh, so we've started the process, and when we sold the bond, uh, we did say that Belmont Middle School was one, and Greer, and then Mount Holly were three that this bond would hopefully pay for one day. And those communities bought into that, and that was part of the, the bond package of those three communities. Now, what order we went in is just assessing the condition. And, and for me, uh, being on this committee, I don't wanna be in the land-buying business for middle schools. Um, so, uh, when we have an opportunity to build on existing property and the demand is there, uh, it's, it's, you know, the next issue of bonds, Greer just made sense with me. Uh, the other, and, and I apologize to the board members for not having all that background because this, this is a big, a couple thick books of identified needs in this county that went way, way, way back. So I'm ju, I'm giving you a lot of history of where all the middle schools are getting replaced. But, um, to that point, um, you know, I'm, I'm on board with this. And, and part of this was as Mr. Hoskins went over, we've sunk a lot of money into those other older schools to buy time. And that's all we're doing, we're just retreading tires with some of those other middle schools.
Uh, if I'm, if I may, Mr. Chairman. This is exactly the conversation I wanted us to have, so that we would all be on the same page. And so I, I mean, this is, this is the information that I wanted, and I don't care whether we have it now or had it, or had it at another meeting and had the resolution on it another time. But so this is exactly the kind of information that I think is important for us to get and for our viewers and our, um, and our parents to hear as well. And so I really appreciate the information, Mr. Hoskins, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Collier, thank you.
Ms. Lovelace?
Will this new facility be large enough to house the students from Yorkchester as well? Isn't that also an older building?
When we did the analysis, just, you know, really rough draft analysis, like I say, we, we've really gotta do soil samples and, and all that. But what we, we sort of looked at, you know, Stanley and Belmont, you know, Stanley is 800 students and it can accommodate, you know, up to 1,000. Uh, Belmont can accommodate 1,000, up to 1,200. And so we sort of put the larger Belmont on there just to see if that would fit initially. You know, there still could be other issues. And, and based on that initial, um, analysis, it would. Um, now, as we get into the soil and see what, you know, limitations we may have, we may have to scale it back a little bit. Uh, but right now, that would be, um, that would be one of the things that we would work towards, yes.
How, how many students attend Yorkchester, do you know?
Let's say 475, something like that.
So that is basically your plan, if that could possibly happen?
Well, we would still like to take advantage of Yorkchester and some other capacity, which would take some, you know, additional students, uh, from other middle schools possibly, uh, but yes.
Mr. Hall?
Uh, did y'all at any time take any consideration for elementary schools being combined or, and that need? Or was that ever proposed, Kev?
If you're asking me, ye, yes.
She answered one of my questions.
Well, and, and she kind of brought up the, the point, and, and, uh, yes, and being on that committee and so, for so long, consolidation anytime that we can do that is something I think we should look at in any new construction. So, um, when, when there's opportunity to do that, uh, I, I think this board would be wise to always look at consolidation anywhere we can, or even look at combinations of intermediate schools with elementary or, or middle. Any, anytime those opportunities come up, I think we should do that.
And, and, yeah. I'm sorry, when we got bond funds, that was the first thing that we did was consolidate three elementary schools into one with Pleasant Ridge. That was our first building that we did, and then we went on to Stanley and Belmont.
So there's still a possibility of combining Yorkchester and Greer? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, well, I thought you were talking about the elementary, but yes, that is, uh, from a, from a middle school standpoint, that is a possibility, yes. Yes, sir.
Everything's possible.
Correct.
There, there, there's a lot of possibilities. Same thing with elementaries, and, and one of the things that we have worked very hard with, and it's worked out well, is building on existing property that we have.
It poses challenges, but yes.
And Greer fits that criteria too, uh, as opposed to some of the other, other sites. Uh, and the same thing would hold true when we do go to elementaries. Um, and, and what we're, what we're asking here is for a, a new bond offering and starting with Greer, but that's gonna give us opportunity to, to, to build other schools, hopefully with that bond offering.
Correct. We currently, we currently have 190 million dollars left from that 250 million dollar bonds, and they, they're only good for seven years.
Yes.
And then they can get an, an automatic, essentially an automatic three-year extension, so really 10 years. So we, we need to always keep moving and move fairly quickly and as efficiently as we can.
Okay, any other questions? And that's clarified, Gary, two middle and one elementary? Is that what you? Go ahead.
I, I think what you're trying to reach to, Mr. Chair, is the 250 million dollar bond issue outlined that there would be two middle schools built, one elementary, and the one elementary was identified as being the southern part of the county. That was the three new constructions that were in the 250 million dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Hoskins?
Yes, and we built one middle school with this 250 million dollars. The other schools were built in other bond offerings.
Okay, correct.
So correct me, Dr. Booker, the, the next school would be a elementary school?
In the
Possibility.
Was, uh, outlining the 250 million would be that we do, and you all had focused on, as, as Mr. Collier and Mr. Hoskins said, the five former high schools that needed to be addressed to be no longer used as middle schools. You know, they were high schools, they became junior highs, and now they're operating as middle schools. And so that's what you all targeted in talking about the bond. So the third new structure would be an elementary school. And the county all along said they would do this in bond issues in three different areas. So yes, sir, it would be in the last part.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Moore, and second by Ms. Cherry. Any other comments or question? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you, Gary, and the next item?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the official depository designation. Uh, state law requires that the Board of Education approve, uh, the list of banks or depositories that each of our 50, 54 schools, uh, use, uh, for their, to deposit their funds in. That list is attached, uh, to your agenda item. Uh, there are no new banks on here from last year. Uh, BB&amp;T, as you know, is merging with SunTrust, so they'll be changing their name to Truist at some point in time. Uh, but that would be the only change that I see here from last year. We ask that you approve this listing.
Next motion that we, uh, put the list is written.
Ms. Cherry, make a motion, second by Ms. Guthrie. Any discussions? All in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. Next on the item, not item, appointment of school treasures. This is actually an item also, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the appointment of school treasures. Uh, this again is a state law that asks or requires that the, the Board of Education officially authorize the treasurer of each of our schools, uh, which we call those our financial secretaries. That listing is attached with all of our current, uh, financial secretaries, or two vacancies, and we'll fill those as soon as we can. Uh, but at the end of each year, or the beginning of each year, uh, the board does make this designation for these treasures, and we ask that you approve this listing.
Mr.? Second by Mr. Hall. All in, uh, any discussions? All in favor? I am very. All right, Mr. Hoskins, this is the information item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
School Nutrition Annual Report.
It'll be Director of Calumia.
Yes.
All of your effort and what you did for children in Gaston County from last March until now. Thank you very, very much.
Yes, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Good evening Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share the School Nutrition Annual Report with you this evening. I'd like to start back, as you mentioned, in March of 2020, when we moved from, uh, in-school to virtual learning, uh, kind of abruptly. And at that time, we immediately moved to the Emergency Summer Feeding Program from our school lunch program. And that allowed us to serve all children breakfast and lunch for free under 18. It also allowed us to let children take their meal away from the school building and, and eat, because nobody was in the school building. We, at the same time, provided, um, meals via bus to areas where we knew children couldn't get out and come to eat with us. So, um, after that time, and until August of 2020, which sounds like years ago, but uh, we provided 3 million meals during that time. I know, it staggers the imagination. We had 54 sites open Monday to Friday, and we served mostly hot meals during that time. Approximately 30,000 meals were delivered via those buses right to children's neighborhoods. Then, when school began in August of 2020, we had to, uh, establish new practices. We started to serve breakfast and lunch in the classroom. Well, that was a, a big change for us. We required, uh, the adaption of different food equipment and different serving practices than we were used to for many, many years here in school nutrition. We had to secure transport carts and different food packaging products. And we had to adapt the menu to something we could serve in the classroom more easily and that children could consume that way. At the same time, we established curbside distribution of meals. So the students that were virtual on the days when students were in school, they could come to the curbside and pick up their meal. Also, mostly hot meals. We fed children in the community, 18 and under. So it didn't ma, matter if they were school age or not. This is just a photo of the school nutrition team on the left getting ready for curbside delivery, and on the right, getting ready to serve meals in the classroom. We quickly expanded to a seven-day-a-week meal program as soon as we figured out how to do this. And we prepared meals to take home for Saturday and Sunday. Again, allowable under the Emergency Summer Feeding Program, normally that's not an option for us. We prepared meals to take home on Wednesday, which was a remote learning day for everybody. And then, for holiday, winter, and spring break, we made boxes, week worth of food, breakfast and lunch, that families could take home and heat up with instructions. Some was, um, shelf-stable, but some were items that they needed to heat and could eat hot. So that was a big success, 8,000 for winter break and 3,000 for spring break. Fortunately, we have a central kitchen here in Gaston County, which really came in handy during this pandemic. We produced take-home meals in our central kitchen, which kept the people there working. And we provided meal packages, thus where we made the weekend meal and the Wednesday meal packages, and all the virtual meals that were easy to take away from the building, and shipped those to the schools each day. So, uh, between March 2020, and this number has gone up since then, but we serve way over 4 million meals, uh, during that timeframe. This was an unintended but great benefit from this whole situation. Our breakfast partition, participation went from 25%, which is about average for most school districts. Breakfast participation is usually not as high as lunch participation. It went to 43% and stayed there till the school let out. Uh, this summer, uh, while we had summer camp in Gaston County, 22 school sites were open. We fed from June 7th, which was before summer camp opened, until August 12th, that's Friday. And we served more than 3,000 children, both breakfast and lunch each day. Again, mostly hot meals. Usually summer feeding programs are bagged sandwiches and cold items, but being we had school sites open, we utilized our kitchens. Serving hot meals, like I said, providing cold meals to take home over the summer for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We also had bus delivery to three different sites into the community this summer, and we had pickup at the school sites at the curbside.
And Angela, you were fortunate that one of your cafeteria managers, Peggy Banner at North Belmont, was featured by Spectrum News.
She was.
And they talked about her passion and how she feels ownership of all the students in her school.
Yes, Dr. Booker, that was great. We had our back-to-school workshop this morning for cafeteria managers, and we showed the video, and I said, Peggy is every one of you. This is, she's an example of all of you, so that was great.
One family, that one woman liked.
Yes.
She made certain that in his bag, he had what he liked and what he would eat.
And I think Angela's right, it just represents the care and concern that her department has had throughout this pandemic. And just watching people with motion, they were putting it on their personal Facebook pages where meals were available and just trying to get into different neighborhoods.
Trying to let everybody know that meals were available, absolutely. Um, during the summer, as usual, we supported some of these other community, um, programs besides our summer camp, but YMCA Boys and Girls, Head Start, and many other organizations, anyone who wanted to come up, pick-up meals could. So we took, like to talk a little bit about our financial performance. Many school nutrition departments suffered during this time. When our funding is based on the participation and how many meals children eat with us, when your, when your customers are not in school full-time, that takes its toll, although some school district didn't have anybody in school, so I feel fortunate for that. But we are able to, we were able to maintain a positive fund balance, uh, which is over two months' operating revenue. So I'm happy to be able to say that tonight. We, um, were able to do that by maximizing our, um, efficiency. We had a new freezer, as you recall, the last time I was here with you, we talked about the new freezer, and it came last summer just in time for us to fill it up with product that we could use during the pandemic. I say that to say that there had been supply chain issues with food, and getting them through a distributor has been difficult. But when you can buy a truckload and bring it to your freezer in your warehouse, it helps tremendously. So I didn't have to worry that we didn't have food in-house, we always had food, thanks, thanks to our freezer in store. So, uh, we also did away with the rental of freezer space that we were renting and rental of dry storage, so that did some cost saving as well. Uh, we did have some help with some COVID funding. We had a grant that helped us buy some of the equipment that we utilized to bring meals to the classroom. And we also had access to the CARES Fund that was specific for school nutrition, which helped us close the gap when there were months when we spent more than our revenue. And that was near the end of 2020, we utilized all the money that we were given. So that helped us too, to stay solvent. And again, in our community outreach, we continue to support Gaston County Head Start. We have partnerships with the Dairy Alliance, Alliance and No Kid Hungry. And of course, our food recovery program with Catawba Heights Baptist Church is still in effect. And of course, our year-round, uh, partnership with the YMCA, we feed during the year and in the summer. Looking forward to this year coming up, uh, we will operate a little different program. It will not be this Emergency Summer Food Service Program as it was last year. We're gonna operate under a program called Seamless Summer, even though it's not summer. It's, uh, it's a program under National School Lunch, so the rules are more like National School Lunch. And I say that to say we will not be taking meals away from the building. Students have to be enrolled in school to receive their meal right now. And I've learned one thing through COVID, things change all the time, and tomorrow, there may be a different rule and a waiver or something. But tonight, that's But tonight, that's the way it is. Again, meals will be free for students 18 and under enrolled in school. And projects for next year, for this year, it's next week. I keep saying next year. We'll provide the meal options that we did pre-COVID. We want children to have choices. One of the things that did suffer, even though we were able to feed children in the classroom, is they couldn't select what they wanted. And we had to take, you know, they had a choice, but it wasn't like when you came to the cafeteria and everything was laid out before you. We will package items separately to be, you know, go along with COVID guidelines, but they still will select what they want from the line. And we are hoping to maintain that increase in breakfast participation that I mentioned earlier. Principals were very supportive of that program. So I'm going to do, as many of principals that want to move forward with that next week, we will do that. We will provide breakfast in the classroom so that we can keep children having breakfast. Breakfast is free and it comes to them, more children are likely to eat. So that's a good thing. We're going to continue our transition to bind direct from the manufacturer, which saves us the middleman. We're going to utilize our USD and commodity food products the way we should. We receive a million dollars a year in commodity money and we used every dime of that, which is the right way to be a good steward of that money. We kicked off a new program for our managers to train new managers. It's a tough time to get labor these days, but we actually had a class of 10 managers start last Friday and we're putting them through a good program. Keep up our marketing and social media and advertise, advertise so children and parents know that they can eat free at school this year. That's it, I think. Any questions?
But thanks to you.
Yeah, no, thank you. And thank you. I just want to say that I'm very fortunate to have the staff that I have here in Gaston County. And I feel very proud to lead that department. They transformed, persevered, did whatever I asked them to do and never said a word, just did it.
And they love our children.
Yes. Mm-hmm. And they love our children, yes.
Ms. Guthrie has.
You are very enthusiastic. You're very enthusiastic. And I can see why.
Not so much at 9 o'clock at night. You should catch me in the morning.
Well, to me, look out 9:00 AM then. I want to ask you, because of the way that you have been serving meals to young people, have you experienced any shortages in supplies or anything like that?
We have, but we've been able to change the menu and adapt when we could, because we had supplies on hand. And there's all kinds of issues, transportation issues, the manufacturers don't have truckers to bring us our product. Just last week, we had to send our drivers over to U.S. Foods to pick up product because they don't have anybody to deliver.
So we don't know what goes on behind the scenes.
Yes.
We just know the wonderful work that you're doing for Gaston County students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There are several items on Consent Agenda tonight. Please take a look at these items. Do I hear a motion for approval? Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. Ms. Cherry.
Mr. Chair, we'll remind everyone, we added the Student Chromebook Purchases for Gaston Virtual Academy. You all have a copy of that. That's your.
So, yeah, right. All in favor? That's unanimous. This brings us time to meeting to hear from our Superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Members of the Board. While we are anticipating greatly next Monday and the start of school, I mentioned earlier that our Early College High School and our new Gaston Early College of Medical Science started their schools on August 10th. I've had the opportunity to visit both schools and learning has been going on and it's exciting to see that. We appreciate the partnership with Gaston College. And it's amazing to the Academic Services Team, the HR Team, and of course, to our two principals, that we have opened a new school in the middle of a pandemic. So think about that for a minute. So I want to thank Josh Allen of the Early College in Beverly Bowman, who leads our new Medical Science Early College, for their hard work and their staff to get those two programs up. And we will, for our Medical Sciences Program, have a grand opening of it at the end of September to celebrate. As was mentioned earlier, yesterday was a great day for the Belmont Middle Grand Opening. There were hundreds of people there that got to tour the new building. And it's an excellent building and a great addition to our fleet of schools. And I want to thank Susan Redmond for her leadership over the past two years in that process, working with Dr. Hushard and his team. So it was an excellent thing and I appreciate all the planning that Mr. Hagan's team did and having a very orderly celebration. But to conclude tonight, you've had a long meeting, you've done a lot of things, and we will need a closed session for a number of items. But I think all of you would agree with me, this is a day that we should be thanking all of our staff who are back and beginning to work. And with great expectation, we look to see the fruits of all of their labor as we open up on next Monday. And so I thank them for what they have done. We have our convocation on Wednesday where we will be celebrating opening. And we are looking forward to thriving and inspiring success in this school year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Booker, and thank all of your time and attention tonight and work you do for the best of our students, teachers and community. We look forward to our next regular meeting, which is currently scheduled for September 20th, 2021. Next on the item is the closed session. I need to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A 6 for personnel, and under the same statute, Paragraph A 3 for consultation with attorney specifically in order to consult with the Board's attorney and protect the attorney-client privilege and to receive advice in respect to the lawsuit captioned 20CVS-3924, Gaston County Board of Education versus ShellCo et al., 3; semicolon, 20-CV-00228-RJ-C-DSC, Scott versus the Gaston County Board of Education et al. and any other legal matters.
Second. Mr. Davis, any discussion? All in favor? We're in closed session. We're back in the open session. Dr. Booker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'd like to recommend the confirmation of three contracts for assistant principals. These are two-year contracts. William Winston, Amber Lawson, and Shanika Mack.
Assistant principals enter our session, I'll go into your basis.
Yeah, most you got to say, Ms. Guthrie, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Now I need a motion for a German, Mr. Hall, named second by Mr. Davis. All in favor? And thank y'all for all your time tonight. Meeting adjourned.